Alrighty, it is 4:00 PM and I call to order the June 10th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. Do I hear a motion to enter Executive Session?
Madam Chair, I move that we enter Executive Session to discuss employment recommendations and updates, the superintendent evaluation/contract, and to receive a quarterly legal update.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We will now enter Executive Session.
Class of 2025, do not give in to fear or despair. Your infinitely love, and that love cannot be taken away from you by anyone, not by yourself, not by others, not by Mr. Dixon.
You've learned that true leadership doesn't always come with a title or a spotlight. It starts from within. It's waking up early to study for the test no one else prepared for. It's pushing through injury or exhaustion to give your team everything you've got. Standing up for what's right when it would have been easier to stay silent. You've shown that leading isn't about being the loudest in the room. It's about being the most consistent, the most accountable, and the most authentic.
As we stand on the edge of the future, we are stepping into new chapters. And everyone's chapter looks a little different. Some of us are starting new careers while others are heading to college or leaving to serve our country. But whatever you pursue, I'm sure that everyone here will continue to make Gilbert proud and build on the legacy you've started. You've already accomplished so much to get to this point in your life. So continue to be resilient and write your own story.
I think that it's a good impact to symbolize what this school does for Unified.
It's amazing to have like that banner to like reward us for all of our victories that we've had.
Just having that banner, it shows us that we like are unified, you know? Like we all, we all should be respected the same way and treated the same way.
There's really three things that I think it does. I think the first thing that we do is, obviously it provides a lot of opportunity for our students with certain and special needs. But I think, we've always done that, but I think what this program really does is it provides a place for our general students, our regular students to have, to practice their empathy, to really show skills that sometimes tests don't really measure. Things like empathy and care and kindness. And so in Lexington One, that's, those are things that for our graduate profile, we are focusing on. And so that gives not only our staff, but our other students opportunities to show those and show growth in that. And so I think it just means that we are really attending to the whole child and our entire community.
All students are created like the same. Even though that they're not physically maybe the same, they are emotionally the same. They have the same emotions as us. And even though they're not, they might not be able to speak or do the same capabilities, they should still get the chances that we receive.
I just want to make sure that especially at this school, that we're leaving the legacy of, leaving our stamp somewhere, that we're not here doing regular everyday stuff. We're improving on lives, we're making changes, we're implementing new programs that's gonna be long lasting.
When they asked me who was the most influential teacher I've had, it was easy. I immediately thought of you.
Thank you for everything you have done for me. You have truly been like a second mom, maybe. You have watched me and Carter grow up. Always there for me, always giving me a hug.
Every time I would pass by Rocky Creek, I would think about you and your students. And I would wonder how your year is going and how you're impacting the next generation. Because truly, you're not just a teacher, but a mentor and a support system. Whatever the problem, you were there. But you also celebrated our accomplishments as our biggest cheerleaders. So Mrs. Sims, thank you from the bottom of my heart for being the most influential teacher that I've had.
You have made a significant impact on my life. And I know you will always be just one color with. Last year when I was your teacher's assistant, I was, it was an amazing experience to see things from your perspective. You are one of the biggest reasons I want to become a teacher. So that I can make an impact like you did for my life.
That is so sweet. Oh my goodness.
I first wanted to join because I heard like electronics engineering. And my teacher was like, oh yeah, we're gonna be flying drones. And I was like, that seems very cool.
There's no other class or school probably that you can go to and learn how to do FAA operations and how to do airport operations and all this other stuff. Because we use the same book from, like, regular pilots wrote the book that we learn out of.
I won't say it was easy, but with all the resources with Mr. Ned, he made it a lot easier than if it's, I was trying to pursue that on my own.
Like before ever coming into this, I didn't know even a quarter of all the laws and the rules that were actually, you have to imply into it. Like just having a recreational drone, you know, and using that for a hobby or just for fun versus having to take a test that little pilots use.
I would definitely recommend this class for anyone who's interested in aviation and just anyone in general, because it is a very good opportunity. Because most people come out of this class with a drone license. So you can go anywhere right after this and start flying drones and start making money off of it. And it's a really good paying job.
It's one of the best programs that can instantly give you something tangible that you can say, I now have this skill. I'm certified in this skill that I could walk out, the second I graduate in three weeks. So in three weeks when I graduate, I could go to a drone company and they would be able to hire me if I wanted to.
You can't have one path and not expect to fall off the path. That's just how life is. That's, that's what this class allows other people to do. So that's why I highly recommend to anybody to take this class. It's a really good class.
Opportunities, challenges, moments, the big and small ones, they are waiting. And just like 12 years ago, you have the power to show up proudly, boldly, and joyfully. Every day, from here on out, the world will keep calling your name.
It has been a joy to witness your journey. And as principal, even in my first year, I've been struck by the incredible wildcat spirit that you embody. I've seen firsthand the pride, the dedication, and the unwavering commitment of excellence that defines this graduating class.
It obviously won't be easy, but pursuing our dreams, whatever they are, is what gives our lives meaning. It will require a lot, and most importantly, it requires you to believe in yourself. There will be many people who work hard, many people who are willing to put in the time and effort. But to truly succeed in the midst of all of these challenges and obstacles, you must believe in yourself.
As we close this chapter, let's hold our pens high, knowing that we have the power to write with purpose. No more pencils, no more erasers. Because this story is not just a draft. It's ours and it's worth writing in pen. Class of 2025, congratulations. The rest is still unwritten, so let's go write something unforgettable.
Miss Adriana.
When I walked through these doors on the first day of my sophomore year, I had no other expectations than getting an A in this class. I received the complete opposite. I did get an A in this class, but I received, I received an amazing teacher.
I actually came here because I was asked to look back at all of my teachers that I've had throughout my entire academic career. And I couldn't think of anyone better.
I believe everything happens for a reason. You show everyone unique kindness, compassion, and love, no matter the situation. You will be there for anyone with guidance and positivity. There are no amount of words to begin to thank you for what you've done for me the last two years, but I'll start with thank you. Thank you for being there for me every single day and supporting me along the way. Love you, queen.
There is no one else that could have prepared me better, not just for middle school, not just for high school, but for the rest of my life. And one thing that I remember so vividly is that you taught me to push out of my little perfectionistic box. And you just showed me that failure is not just okay, it's encouraged. It can show me how to learn, how to grow. And yes, and how to be the very best that I can be. I just want to say thank you so much for everything.
Come on, Dee, that was beautiful.
I love you, princess.
Just coming in here and seeing the kitchen and the tables, it was just wow.
We were learning about job opportunities and this was one of them for us. We learned how to work together in a kitchen as a teamwork and learn how to be involved with one another.
We have a small sized kitchen like one you would find in the home. So being able to come over and go through how to, all the kitchen safety in terms of industrial, that's the biggest thing is we can't replicate that at the school level. So having an industrial kitchen, amazing.
Felt like the actual job, it was a great person, a great experience to really get to. Being a server was really amazing also too, getting to know the customers and just being there whenever they needed something, it was really amazing. What she helped us with is, you know, being prepared. You gotta take initiative and make sure you can be a team leader, a team player. Make sure you got it, make sure you can come out, make sure everything is right. So you can come out here, help the customers out, get the food out, get the drinks out, you know, make sure everything is great.
It means that we can put them in a real life situation before we put them into the workplace. It's, it's in my small kitchen at White Knoll, I can show them kitchen safety, but I can't show them how to run an industrial, you know, dishwasher. I can't show them how to run a skillet like, like they have here, the ovens and things like that. And so being able to put it in, in a real life situation and see them do the work is so cool.
Opportunity like this is really important because it gives you the opportunity to see what kind of job you can have.
There's a lot of job opportunities, but this one right here is something that I think of. Like it's number one in my head, was the job that I would work at.
As a million Panthers, we've navigated through the ups and downs of high school life, including the challenges of COVID, the excitement of an election, and even adapting to a new cellphone policy. Let this ceremony be a joyful reflection of our journey and a hopeful glance towards the future. Let's embrace this moment with happiness and pride, knowing that the best is yet to come. And remember, if we can survive a semester without our phones, we can survive anything.
As you step into this new chapter, carry the lessons you've learned, the friendships you've forged, and the vision you've cultivated with you. Embrace the challenges ahead, knowing that you are prepared to face them with courage and conviction. Go forth and create a future worthy of your dreams. A future where your vision becomes reality.
As we close this chapter of our lives and open the next, remember that no matter where you go, what you do, or who you become, the memories and experience that shaped you will always be with you.
A day in the life of a social worker, you can have a day planned and it can go completely the opposite. You can have, you know, meetings planned and then sometimes just issues come up with families. There's certain referrals that come in that need more attention. So it's just on a day-to-day basis of what the needs are. We service throughout the whole district. I think it's just important to know that overall, we're here to help our families and students. I think there's a stereotype of a conjunction between social work and automatically DSS, and that's not the case. We're here to service our students and families. We're here to help in any way that we can and we're able to. So more than anything, I want families to know that we're here to support them and to support their students. And that's our priority to make sure the students have a successful education. We play a crucial role. We're essentially the collaborators between the school, family, and community services. I think you really need that middle person because sometimes, you know, families might not know that we offer certain things, or they might not know that there's something in the community that can service their needs. So I think as our role, as what I've seen that I worked here, it's really important for us to be here. You establish these relationships with parents and you're able to guide them and help them. We're here to advocate for you. We're here for your students. We're here to service your students and families. And essentially, whatever, you know, whatever the need may be, I want parents and students to know that someone is here to help you.
Coach Walls, you have been an undeniably incredible influence in my life, both as my math teacher and softball coach.
Mr. L has been a fantastic teacher throughout my middle school years. His impact on me has been immeasurable.
In the classroom, you helped me explore a newfound love for math, which has led me to want to pursue an education in engineering and mathematics. On the field, your encouragement and care have helped me both develop my skills and confidence. There have been countless times when I was left in tears after my performance on the field and without you there to support me, I doubt I would be the same woman that I am today. Beyond academics and athletics, you have taught me the importance of perseverance and believing in myself. I am truly grateful for your guidance and support, which have shaped my character and vision and my future.
Mr. L was a core reason for me to pursue an engineering career. He taught me how to be innovative, enthusiastic, and adaptive. I wish he received more recognition for his professional work and I'm very grateful to express my gratitude for such a wonderful teacher.
I'm so proud of you, Leo.
So much. Hi.
The qualities and memories instilled in us these past four years are something to hold near and dear to our hearts. So whether your path leads to college, the workforce, the military, or any other pursuit, I encourage you to carry with you the memories created as a River Bluff Gator.
Classic 2025, you've already changed our school for the better. Now go and change the world. Take what you've learned, take who you've become, empower others, and be the reason someone believes in kindness, in courage, and in hope.
The teachers who pushed us, the counselors who listened, our principal who showed up to almost every single sporting event, our friends who sat with us when we were quiet, and to our parents who put up with our teenage antics and insecurities, you are the steady hands that guided our journey.
As we scatter in a million directions into colleges, jobs, and new cities, we carry that legacy with us. We carry the ability to truly see people, to hear past the noise, and to lead with heart. That's something the world doesn't teach, but we taught it to each other. Class of 2025, we are ready, not because we know where we're going, but because we know who we are.
I just don't think people understand how impactful it is to be with students who have disabilities or athletes with disabilities and how much joy and just light they bring into everybody's world.
Gilbert Middle School's Taylor Doty is no stranger to helping those with special needs.
When I was in seventh grade, I noticed we had a couple of students in the self-contained class in our PE group. You know, I just had this feeling like I didn't like, they were kind of off to the side by themselves and I wanted to, you know, build relationships with them. And I wanted to see, you know, what impact I could have on them, but also what impact they would have on me because I knew it was going to be big.
After that experience, Doty did everything she could to be part of the Unified Classes at her schools. And that led her to decide at 13, she was going to be a special education teacher.
Through the relationships I built and the student-athletes I were partners with, those really like became my passion and that's kind of where I found my calling. So I always knew, like I said, from when I was 13 years old, that I want to be a special ed teacher. And those just kind of amplified that or made it more of like, this is really what I want to do. And I just kept pushing to be that.
Reps from 47 states and four Canadian provinces met in South Carolina for the Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools Annual Conference. The goal: Continued Inclusion and Support of Unified Activities on a Local Level for Special Olympic Athletes.
In 2017, Doty and her classmates' hard work to promote an inclusive school environment led Lexington High to becoming South Carolina's first Special Olympics National Unified Banner School.
A lot of the students and athletes I've worked with throughout the years have just given me a different perspective on life. You know, we don't take the small things for granted. We, you know, live in all the moments, all the funny moments. And we really just take it day by day. And they've kind of shown me, you gotta roll with the punches and be able to do whatever you gotta do.
She immediately, you know, fit right in with the class. You could tell she built a quick rapport with the students. And we did a summer camp, I guess she was in college at that point, and it was free for the students. And we just had people volunteer to come in and help, and she was there every day, just giving of herself and her time, and she was incredible.
Now as a teacher, Doty has seen both sides of the Unified Program and played a role in helping two Lexington One schools becoming a National Unified Champion School.
The journey from being a middle school partner to a special education teacher was long, but it was so rewarding. The more people I meet who have intellectual disabilities, the more it just reensures me that I'm doing what I love to do. No one understands how much just one person with a disability can impact someone who has no disability at all. And it is amazing to see, you know, students grow and to see my partners from high school and what they're doing in today's world. And I just, I wish everybody could have the same opportunity.
A journey Doty hopes inspires others to help create a world where everyone chooses to include.
Ms. Holmes, when I think back to when I was in your class, I can't help but smile. Your class has given me some of my best memories of being in school.
I came here to tell you how big of an impact you had on where I want my future to be in, like my career.
You've shown me how being a teacher isn't just about teaching your students. It's about connecting and having an impact on them. Even though, even only having you for one year, you have made the biggest impact on me and I'll forever be grateful. Thank you for making your class the class I looked forward to at school and showing me what it means to be a great teacher.
Since I took your sixth-grade digital design class, it opened my eyes to a whole new world of art that I could explore. And that's where I started in high school and the rest of middle school, exploring in different types of art using Photoshop, Adobe Lightroom, and all that stuff. And now I work for the district office being an intern for graphic design.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and you just made such a big impact just from like being in that class and mentoring me.
Thank you. That's the sweetest thing ever.
I appreciate you for that.
Let us go out there and make some noise. Let us chase our dreams with passion and purpose. Let us be kind, be brave, and be the change we wish to see in the world.
Class of 2025, as you move forward from here, I want to encourage you to pursue your passions and never stop learning. Remember that success is not just about the grades you earn or the jobs you land, but about the impact that you make on the world around you.
As you leave White Knoll, you're given a fresh start, a blank slate to define who you are and who you want to be. You have the opportunity to choose your own path, schedule, hobbies, goals, and dreams. Who you were the past four years has changed and will only continue to do so as time passes. The world is your oyster, ready to be changed by our minds and aspirations. As we leave the school and our high school lives behind us, we need to think of this as a frontier closing and our next steps as a new one opening up at our feet. And yeah, we might not have it all figured out yet, but with hope, courage, and a little bit of blind confidence, we will face the next steps in our life.
When I was given this opportunity, I was told to pick my favorite teacher. I didn't have to think because I automatically knew I was going to pick you. Your classroom was not only a space for learning, but it was a space that we all knew we had a special place in.
You made the biggest impact on me through my school years. And I just want to tell you, I thank you so much for that.
It feels like yesterday when I was walking into your classroom, getting ready for the day. You had such an amazing impact on not only my life, but many of my friends' lives. Madison and I still talk about our A to Z activity around South Carolina. Thank you for always making us feel loved and wanted, no matter how bad we were. I'm so thankful to have had you as a teacher and a part of my life.
Thank you for being the teacher that always had lasting impact on me through the years out of high school and middle school. Being the person who kept it real with me if I was doing bad, doing good, and always showing support. And thank you just for being that teacher.
Thank you, Ally. That is so sweet.
Class of 2025, do not give in to fear or despair. Your infinitely love, and that love cannot be taken away from you by anyone, not by yourself, not by others, not by Mr. Dixon.
You've learned that true leadership doesn't always come with a title or a spotlight. It starts from within. It's waking up early to study for the test no one else prepared for. It's pushing through injury or exhaustion to give your team everything you've got. Standing up for what's right when it would have been easier to stay silent. You've shown that leading isn't about being the loudest in the room. It's about being the most consistent, the most accountable, and the most authentic.
As we stand on the edge of the future, we are stepping into new chapters. And everyone's chapter looks a little different. Some of us are starting new careers while others are heading to college or leaving to serve our country. But whatever you pursue, I'm sure that everyone here will continue to make Gilbert proud and build on the legacy you've started. You've already accomplished so much to get to this point in your life. So continue to be resilient and write your own story.
I think that it's a good impact to symbolize what this school does for Unified.
It's amazing to have like that banner to like reward us for all of our victories that we've had.
Just having that banner, it shows us that we like are unified, you know? Like we all should be respected the same way and treated the same way.
There's really three things that I think it does. I think the first thing that we do is, obviously it provides a lot of opportunity for our students with certain and special needs. But I think, we've always done that, but I think what this program really does is it provides a place for our general students, our regular students to have, to practice their empathy, to really show skills that sometimes tests don't really measure, things like empathy and care and kindness. And so in Lexington One, that's, those are things that for our graduate profile, we are focusing on. And so that gives not only our staff, but our other students opportunities to show those and show growth in that. And so I think it just means that we are really attending to the whole child and our entire community.
All students are created like the same. Even though that they're not physically maybe the same, they are emotionally the same. They have the same emotions as us. And even though they are not, they might not be able to speak or do the same capabilities, they should still get the chances that we receive.
I just want to make sure that especially at this school, that we're leaving a legacy of leaving our stamp somewhere, that we're not here doing regular, everyday stuff. We're improving our lives, we're making changes, we're implementing new programs that's going to be long-lasting.
When they asked me who was the most influential teacher I've had, it was easy. I immediately thought of you.
Thank you for everything you have done for me. You have truly been like a second mom, maybe. You have watched me and Carter grow up together, always there for me, always giving me a hug.
Every time I would pass by Rocky Creek, I would think about you and your students. And I would wonder how your year is going and how you're impacting the next generation. Because truly, you're not just a teacher, but a mentor and a support system. Whatever the problem, you were there. But you also celebrated our accomplishments as our biggest cheerleaders. So Mrs. Sims, thank you from the bottom of my heart for being the most influential teacher that I've had.
You have made a significant impact on my life. And I know you will always be just one color away. Last year when I was your teacher's assistant, I was, it was an amazing experience to see things from your perspective. You are one of the biggest reasons I want to become a teacher, so that I can make an impact like you did for Tyler.
I love you. That is so sweet. Oh my goodness.
I first wanted to join because I heard like electronics engineering. And my teacher was like, oh yeah, we're gonna be flying drones. And I was like, that seems very cool.
There's no other class or school probably that you can go to and learn how to do FAA operations and how to do airport operations and all this other stuff because we used the same book from, like, regular pilots wrote the book that we learned out of.
I won't say it was easy, but with all the resources of Mr. Ned, he made it a lot easier than if it's, I was trying to pursue that on my own.
Like before ever coming into this, I didn't know even a quarter of all the laws and the rules that were actually, you have to imply into it. Like just having a recreational drone, you know, and using that for a hobby or just for fun versus having to take a test that little pilot's used.
I would definitely recommend this class for anyone who's interested in aviation and just anyone in general because it is a very good opportunity. Because most people come out of this class with a drone license. So you can go anywhere right after this and start flying drones and just start making money off of it. And it's a really good paying job.
It's one of the best programs that can instantly give you something tangible that you can say, I now have this skill, I'm certified in this skill that I could walk out. The second I graduate in three weeks, so in three weeks when I graduate, I could go to a drone company and they would be able to hire me if I wanted to.
You can't have one path and not expect to fall off the path. That's just how life is. And that's, that's what this class allows other people to do. So that's why I highly recommend to anybody to take this class. It's a really good class.
All right, welcome back. Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn executive session and return to general session.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. I call to order the June 10th, 2025 board meeting. The district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. The district tapes the meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. Will you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to begin the public hearing for the 2025-2026 general fund operating budget?
Madam Chair, I move that we begin the public hearing regarding the 2025-2026 proposed general fund operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, at this time, we'll hear the third reading of the budget, and after that, we will hear public comment on the budget. Board members, your discussion of the budget will occur after a vote is on the floor when we get to section 13 action items. So Dr. Post, I mean, Dr. Price, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Henson, and good evening, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Tonight, I am happy to bring you the final presentation of the 25-26 general budget. Throughout this process, we've tried to be very responsive to the inquiries and requests of the board, to be very transparent and accurate with regards to the items being presented, and to be forward-thinking and reflective with the items we've identified that we would like to do in order to sustain and grow the high-quality education experience that our employees, parents, and community appreciate about our great school district. As you recall, the board discussed and established some priorities for this budget. First, we convened a salary study committee that was made up of teachers, support staff members, administrators, and board members that explored aspects of our salary schedules and made recommendations that established a higher beginning salary, more balanced step increments to those who gain experience each year, and suggestions for recruiting and retaining our hardest-to-fill positions, those who work with students with special needs. The result of the committee's recommendations carried an estimated financial impact of $12.8 million. And since 2022, the starting salary for teachers in Lexington I has risen from $41,410 to $49,000 in this current year, and to $52,000 if the proposed budget is approved. This represents increases of roughly 6%, 7%, and now 10.6% over the past three years. Since 2023, beginning-level support staff salaries have risen from $14.71 per hour to $15.60 per hour in the proposed budget. And since 2023, beginning bus driver pay has risen from $19.29 per hour to the proposed $20.47 per hour for the next fiscal year. I applaud the board for continuing to identify salaries and pay as priorities as we continue to work to attract and retain the best employees possible throughout our district. We hear, we were asked to prioritize the committee's recommendations, and we feel we have done that through this process. Second, we were asked to maintain Lexington I's low student-to-teacher ratio. As we've worked on position allocations for schools, we have sustained the same planning ratio. You may recall the famous backpack presentation that is referenced with regards to teaching allocations per school and how that compares to the states. We have lower ratios. Later in the presentation, you'll see a chart that summarizes by position the total number of employees, salaries, and benefits, and their percentage of the overall budget. In total, salary and benefits make up about 87% of our total budget. The chart you will see on slide seven quantifies maintaining the Lexington I established ratios. Third, we were asked to develop a balanced budget with no or minimal millage increase depending on the level of state funding. As we continue to learn more about the state's new funding formula, we are seeing that it will continue to be more and more challenging for districts like ours to continue to offer the level of services we're accustomed to without taking a look at our operating millage. We are thankful for the adjustment that the legislature approved last month that adjusted the waitings for our students, and we're hopeful that the committee being convened at the state level that will revisit the funding formula will find a solution that is more favorable and predictable. With the board's expectation to spend down some of our accumulated fund balance, and with the work of our finance and payroll team identifying the ability to budget at a 96% fill rate versus a 100% fill rate, we feel we've met this expectation. In fact, thanks to this adjustment, this helps explain why the 25-26 budget is only 8.7 million more than last year's budget. With regards to number four, Mrs. Miller has now included this as part of her monthly updates to the board, and we've identified approximately $11 million to apply towards this year's budget. For number five, we were asked to prioritize the items that were being considered for this year's budget. We categorized them into several different categories for your consideration. Those included federal and state mandates to remain in compliance, fixed cost increases that were out of our control, Lexington I standards to ensure we continue to provide the same level of experience across all of our schools, and then the would-like-to-dos. The would-like-to-do section was made up of items that school district leaders identified that could help us all meet the ever-changing needs of our schools and students. We also asked our principals to identify the items that were their highest priority so that they all had voice through this process as well. You may recall that the elementary principals requested to move halftime math coaches to full-time math coaches. Middle school principals recognized that three of the eight middle schools only had two assistant principals due to their low student enrollments, while the others had three. Their request was to add assistant principals at these three schools. And the five high school principals requested an additional assistant principal because of the behavioral, attendance, supervisory, academic, and other duties being balanced by those currently allocated. All of the budget request items were aligned to specific strategic plan initiatives as requested. And finally, as mentioned earlier, we used a more realistic fill rate of 96% for budgetary purposes. When we began this budgetary journey, you may recall that we started with several different options for your consideration. With option one, we didn't include the full recommendations of the salary study committee. Between the time of the salary study committee's work and our budget workshop, we learned that the House and Senate were not likely to grant Superintendent Weaver and Governor McMaster's request to raise the minimum starting teacher salaries by 3,000. Instead, we were proposing a $1,500, they were proposing a $1,500 increase. With only a $1,500 increase, we would have been unable to address the inconsistent step amounts for teachers, which was a recommendation of the salary study. Option one only included a $1,500 increase for teacher salaries along with state and federal mandates, fixed cost increases, and some, but not all, of the Lexington I standards items. Option one included an approximately $2.5 million allocation from the fund balance. With option two, we included a $3,000 increase to the starting teacher salary and all recommendations from the salary study committee. These were added to the other items included in option one and would have included an approximately $8.3 million allocation from fund balance. With option three, it included all of the items from option two along with the would-like-to-do items that you all received a presentation on, and this option would have included an approximate $10.7 million allocation from fund balance. Financial figures were updated through the previous readings, which is why this number changed a bit over time. And with option four, it included all items from option three and some additional items that had been suggested or recommended that didn't really fall into one of the other categories. After discussing the four options that were presented, the board's consensus was for district administration to come back with some iteration of option three. Option 3A was presented that included all of the items from the would-like-to-do list. Option 3B was presented, and it only included the assistant principal additions and the middle school interventionist positions from the would-like-to-do list that had received prior approval for contingency funding. There was also a 3B plus option that was considered that selected some items from the would-like-to-do list, but not all of them. After discussion, the consensus from the board was to move forward with option 3A. You may recall that there was some additional discussion about identifying some key performance indicators for the items included in this budget. I'd like to share that this is a, there is a committee meeting this Thursday to begin identifying these metrics and how we will track and report the impact over time. Our plan is to bring that proposal back to the board at our August meeting to receive feedback before moving forward with implementation. The hope and the intent is to show the positive measurable impact of these items over time if we are going to sustain them in the years ahead. Knowing that this is in interest of the board with future budget processes, we can have these indicators prepared at the time of presentation. If you click on the link on this slide, and it appears. There we go. You'll see the breakdown of the new items we are accounting for in the 25-26 budget. You all have been very instrumental in getting us from the four options that were originally presented to where we are tonight. There are a number of things that can be celebrated with this budget from impacting all employee pay to addressing the needs that have been identified through teacher, principal, and administrator voice. As you scroll down through the bottom, you can see how the items are color-coded according to the categories that were described. Okay, Daniel, if you could go back to the slide deck. This next slide is a breakdown of the different categories that were color-coded in the previous link. As you can see, the salary study recommendations make up the largest portion of the budget proposal, followed by the combination of federal and state mandates. As a note, we are anticipating an approximately seven points, I'm sorry, $6.7 million increase in state revenue. If you only combine the state and federal mandates along with the increase in the fixed costs, those total approximately $7.4 million. So if our increase that we're expecting is 6.7, we know we have to rely on local revenue or fund balance to meet our non-negotiables. This is just one example of how the current state education funding formula presents challenges for us. But that's a comprehensive review of the journey that we've been on from beginning to end with a variety of different options, collecting the feedback that you all have provided, doing some deeper diving on some of the more specific items along with presentations and learning, and that brings us to where we are today. The next slide is going to be picked up by Mrs. Miller, who will go into some additional detail.
All right, thank you, Dr. Price, and good evening, Mrs. Henson and board members. On this next slide, we have the positions, the full-time equivalents, FTEs, their salary and fringe amounts. Now, I will let you know that if you were to add up all the salary and fringe, that's not going to tie back exactly to the budgeted amounts because these positions are at 100%. And as Dr. Price had said, we are budgeting at a more realistic 96%. So those figures are not going to tie exactly. And they also, in the budget, the numbers will have supplements and temporary salaries and extra days. So those are not reflected in this slide either. We do have one item here that we know we still need to make a change. It's not adding an FTE, it's just moving it between line items, but we wanted to make sure that we let you know about that. We believe we have a multilingual program coordinator. It's budget neutral. Again, we're not adding an FTE. It's just moving it from one line item to the central service admin line. But it is in the teacher library librarian line on the top, so just wanted to make you aware of that. And the total FTEs on this are 3,940 FTEs. Now, moving on, this hopefully looks a little bit familiar. Wanted to give you a recap of the dollars that are in the budget. You have the detailed information, but this is just a summary using the same format that you're familiar with in your monthly reports. You can see there that the proposed general fund revenue, which does include use of the fund balance of approximately $11 million, You can see that the largest portion of that is coming from the state revenue. The next largest there would be our local revenue, followed by transfers, which is really state revenue that's just in other funds, and then the use of the fund balance of $11 million. Now, I will let you know that when we prepare these numbers, we are using estimates, and these numbers will change, particularly the state revenue. We know that that number already has a revised amount from the State Department. It's not a material amount to where we feel we need to adjust it at this time. It would be an increase of approximately $108,000. But again, that will change after the 135th day count next May. So in May of '26, we will finally know what that state revenue is actually going to be. But for now, we feel that the number we have here is very consistent with what we're expecting. Moving on to the next slide, we have your total general fund expenditures. That amount equals the revenue, so you have a balanced budget. As Dr. Price had mentioned, salaries and benefits are going to make up the largest portion of the budget, which is 88%, followed by purchase services, then by supplies and capital expenditures. then by supplies and capital expenditures, a category called other, and then transfers to other funds. Keep in mind, again, these are projected numbers. These are using the information that we had at the time. There is still some unknown legislation that is out there. You'll recall, we've mentioned in several of the meetings where you are still waiting to see what's going to happen with the employer health insurance. That could be a proposed increase of four-point-six percent. We would only need to budget half of that because they do use a calendar year when they make those changes. If you'll recall, at the very beginning of the budget season, it was actually saying that would be an employee increase. Well, that shifted to an employer increase, so no employee increase. But we could see approximately a million dollar increase in expenditures when they finalize legislation, hopefully this next month. There's another piece of information that came through in the last several weeks, but we have what we call the insurance surcharge portion of the retirement contribution. We had, they never use, they don't usually give us that amount, but we did bump it a little to have an increase. Well, it turns out they did not increase it this year. They actually decreased it slightly. So it's not a large number, but it is about two-hundred thousand dollars reduction in expenditure. So again, that's an unknown. We're not sure that's how legislation is going to turn out, but it does look like they're leaning that way. And then again, staffing is going to change, which is really going to impact that salary and benefit amount. But hopefully, budgeting at the ninety-six percent rate, we will fall more in line with the budgeted amount. And then moving down on slide ten, there is a link here that will take you to the budget, which is a nine-page document that has it by function and object code. Gives you a little bit of detail in there. That's the revenue page that you're looking at right now. And then the pages subsequent to that will be the expenditures. And you can see on the far left is the function category. And then you have your object groupings with salaries, supplies, purchased services, and so forth. And you will notice on the last page that the total there should agree to the numbers that we were just referring to on the slides. And Daniel, if we can go back to the slide deck. The last thing I wanted to point out is we do have the school fees. We were able to get the finalized lunch and breakfast amounts. Again, those are mandated. We do not have a say in those, but we do have those finalized. So the breakfast for next year will be two dollars, and the lunch will be three dollars and fifty cents. So those each increased by ten cents. And there were no other changes to the fees that you've seen in the prior presentations. And with that, that completes our presentation. Dr. Price, I'll turn things back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, and that concludes our presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Price. During this next part of our meeting of the public hearing, the board trustees provides a time for citizens' public comment regarding the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six proposed general fund operating budget. There are a few guidelines to follow during this time. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. I will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern. We want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. At this time, you may comment only on the general fund budget. We have set aside another section of our, of time for citizens' participation on other agenda items, school operations, or programs. You may not speak about or name specific individuals, whether students or school or district staff. Failure to follow this rule will result in immediately, immediate loss of the opportunity to speak. The board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. You may address the board for up to three minutes. If you have any handouts for the board, please give them to Ms. Halliday in the back of the room, and she will distribute them. Please do not clap or make any comments, either while an individual speaks or after he, she finishes. Mrs. Heim, you may speak.
Good evening, Board Chair. I thought I was going to get lucky here because I came in and this room was so packed. That's great that there's so many people attending a school board meeting. I thought maybe y'all would address the budget. Over recent years, Lexington One has improved transparency and accountability by switching auditors, appointing a new chief financial officer, separating operations and finance, and looking into launching the district's first bond referendum audit. The outgoing superintendent has enhanced transparency by publishing previously withheld credit card statements as required by state law and led the curriculum audit to help identify areas of strength and weakness. Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you to our teachers and staff and board members for your dedication and many demands. The district spending raises concerns to me, just as a citizen here in this community. I went back just a couple of years before COVID. I picked the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year and looked it up. The budget was two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars for about twenty-six thousand students. We had twenty-nine schools and two additional facilities that weren't being used as schools last year with twenty-six thousand, three hundred, give or take, depends exactly which number you're pulling. And we now have a budget at four-hundred-one million dollars for thirty schools and five facilities that aren't being used as schools. This is a forty-three percent budget increase over the last seven years. Of course, it's partly due to state mandated teacher salary hikes, which I absolutely support, paying our teachers and our staff more. So thank you for addressing that. But it certainly hasn't translated to proportional academic progress. I don't have the answer for that. But I pulled the, from the Department of Education, our SC Ready data shows that our third-grade English proficiency fell from sixty percent meeting or exceeding expectations in twenty-nineteen to fifty-eight percent in twenty-twenty-four, which is fairly flat over that period of time. Eighth-grade math is much more troubling. Thirty-one percent of our students today are meeting or exceeding expectations. While in twenty-nineteen, it was forty percent of students were meeting or exceeding expectations. That's trending in the wrong direction, so our scores aren't reflecting the increased financial investment. And I would just urge the board to align spending with student and staff needs and the community priorities. With flat enrollment, please avoid another bond referendum. Instead of acquiring more facilities, can we please focus more on improving our core academics to address the learning gaps and help more students find more success? I don't know exactly what those answers are, but I do know that there are good people in our schools who do. And we need to continue identifying these shortcomings so that we can intervene earlier or stronger and meet more of those needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Heim. At this time, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Who have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. All those in favor? Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Okay.
Are we?
Alrighty, we will now begin the general session of our June tenth, twenty twenty five, monthly Board of Trustees meeting. Again, I'll just remind you that the district is in compliance Again, I'll just remind you that the district is in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting, and we approved the agenda for the evening prior to the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of student travel requests?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items as listed with the exception of student travel requests.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. And just so that people know, the consent agenda tonight includes the minutes from the May 6th Board Meeting, the minutes from the May 20th Board Meeting, and our new Higher Support Staff Report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve 39 certified staff recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve 39 certified staff employment recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve two administrative recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve two administrative employment recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Price, how are we looking for our next school year?
We are excited about next school year. This wonderful group of administrators out here has been very busy hiring. We are in a good place, but of course are still looking for more bright, shiny, wonderful faces to come join our Lexington One family. So if you know of any support staff or teachers that are looking to work, we would love to have them join our team, so.
Okay. Board, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. The next item on our agenda is our superintendent evaluation contract. Do I have a motion regarding that?
Madam Chair, after considering the board members' comments regarding Dr. Postlethwaite's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Postlethwaite receive an overall extremely effective evaluation for the 24-25 school year.
Thank you, Ms. McCown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any discussion? I don't know which, where we want to start. Would anybody like to begin?
I'll start on this.
Alright, Mr. Pazuti.
So, Dr. Postlethwaite, in the short time that we've been working together on the board, just want to give you a sincere thank you. For one thing, for even before I got on the board, always being an open ear when I've reached out to you for for questions or concerns. You always open the door for me to come in and to speak to you, and I appreciate that. You don't always get that when you're someone out in the public. And I appreciate what you've done for the district since I've been here. You have helped me greatly in understanding some things. Some questions, you've always been able to answer them, to explain to me, you know, what this is or what that is. I appreciate our weekly phone calls. That shows great transparency, and I appreciate that. And other people probably touch on that too for, you know, giving us that one-on-one with the superintendent where we're, you know, we have your ear weekly, and then even if, even if it's not on our scheduled call, you've always been there. So I appreciate you. Thank you for everything you've done for the board and the district and everyone in here, and I wish you luck in your future endeavors. It's very well deserved.
I would just like to say that as a new board member, with all of your wisdom and years of experience, you made me feel at home even though it was new to you too. And, you know, I wasn't on the board with the previous superintendent, but I, but I just know that there was not a massive level of communication between the board and, and the superintendent. And I just, coming on, I just really appreciated that. Probably the most, my most favorite thing every Friday, that Dr. Price is going to keep going.
Do we need to make that into a motion?
But I just really, really value your, you know, your wisdom and, and just gave us a chance to catch up every week and communicate, and that was huge for me and I know for the rest of the board, so you will be greatly missed and, you know, don't be surprised if you still get a Friday phone call from me.
Alright, Dr. Postlethwaite, in true engineer fashion, I have bullet points. So hopefully, hopefully I don't steal other folks' thunder, but there's several things that kind of stood out to me. There, you've accomplished so many things, there are too numerous to name in just one meeting. But I wanted to highlight a few things. I like the fact that you had the foresight to hire in-house counsel, especially in the legal realm that we're in nowadays, and education seems to be in the middle of that turmoil. I think it's really good, and you got a great person to do that for us. Establishing listening sessions in each school, I know you and Dr. Price have teamed up on that, but I know you were kind of instrumental in doing that. Teacher voice is very important to me, so you all being willing to take your time, as busy as you are, to go in schools and every single school and listen, I think was very, very important. It showed our district who you are and what you're trying to accomplish. Another thing I have is taking the time to build the capacity of our staff. I think we have a great staff, great leadership team, but at the same time, it's always good to have somebody who's walked across the minefield, so to speak, and they can come back and say, "Don't step there, step there. Don't step here, step there." And so now I see our leadership team has risen to a new level, and I know a lot of that is due to your leadership. The other thing is developing a strategic plan, you know, it's kind of like trying to play basketball without baskets. You don't have a target to shoot at, so you don't know if you're succeeding or not. So developing a strategic plan, I think was vital for us to do that, so that we know where we're going. And then with kids, we've seen our ELA and our math scores on the upswing. And I know a lot of that is, we wanted to get you in there, a person who brings us back to where we were after COVID and gets us back where we need to be as far as Lexington One. Let's see what else. Also, one thing that's near and dear to my heart is getting the bond referendum audit in. We talked about it for a while, and I remember in one of our phone calls, you said, "I keep hearing this, we need to go ahead and get this done and get this on the agenda," and you did that. And so we really appreciate you just being good for your word. And the last thing I will say is, I think, board briefs. Board briefs was a novel concept. I hope I'm not stealing y'all's thunder, but that's what you run into by not being first. Anyway, but board briefs was a novel concept that not only helped the board, because there's so much going on, but it helped us have a vehicle we could go to every week to see what is happening, what's going on. But it also allowed our community to understand what's happening and what's going on. And I think giving that visibility to the community helped them understand, "Oh, they're not just sitting on their hands and going to a board meeting once a month. There's stuff going on all the time." And so I just think those were great, great concepts. So I know you're a results-oriented person, but I wanted to give you some results, because I know you want to hear, "What have I, what have I made a difference?" The only other thing I'll say is this, and I'll wrap up my comments. I ran for the board before, did not get elected. Ran for the board before, did not get elected. Got elected. You're the only superintendent I know as a board member, and I'm really glad that you are the superintendent, because you actually helped teach me a lot about being a good board member, and I really appreciate that.
Oh, you're gonna skip yourself, okay.
I have called her admiringly, "The Velvet Hammer." She came to us, we were in, we were in a, in a bit of a bind, I would say, and she came on board as our interim. And in our process of trying to find a new superintendent, we realized that we already had her. She was right here with us, and you stepped into that role gracefully and forcefully. I think that you took the helm right away, kept the ship upright and afloat, laser point accuracy on defining things and making our people feel good about what they do every day. And I'm sure that you out there would agree with me on that. It's hard for me to say farewell to you. It really is. We've become friends, and I hope that we maintain that friendship for many years to come, and I wish you every success in everything that you do going forward.
I am much like Mr. Pazuti in that I have not had the privilege to work with you as long as some of the others that are sitting up here, but I was not the most quiet, public person prior to running for or joining the board. And in superintendent, superintendents prior to you did never responded to me. In the very first call that I made to you, I got a call back instantly, and an invite to come sit down with you in person. And I think that speaks to me what you mean for this community. The fact that you realize that you have a great job in leading not only the teachers and the staff here, but also in leading the community, because we all know that everybody wants to move to Lexington, because Lexington One is a great school district. And who we have at the helm is a good driver of that. I will say my most notable accomplishment, looking back, is the curriculum audit. At the end of the day, our job up here, the job that everybody has in the schools is to educate future students and graduates. And I think that was a really, really great resource that you left us as we look forward for the next couple of years, knowing where we were and where we need to go. So I very much hope you enjoy your retirement. Unlike Mrs. McCown, I will not bother you, but if you want to call me, you have my number.
Dr. Postlethwaite, my board colleagues have so eloquently stated wonderful things that you've brought to our district, and there aren't many districts in South Carolina, or really in America, that have the opportunity to work with someone with 50 years of experience in public education, but it has been a personal and professional privilege to work with you. And we wish you all the best in your retirement. So with that, Ms. McCown, do you mind rereading your motion before we vote on it?
Sure. Madam Chair, after considering the board members' comments regarding Dr. Postlethwaite's performance, I move that we conclude as a board that Dr. Postlethwaite receive an overall extremely effective evaluation for the 24-25 school year.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Anderson seconded that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. During executive session, the board also received a quarterly legal update, and no action is necessary at this time. Now, for our favorite part of the night, our honors and achievements. Make sure you grab your copy of Proof Positive, which was outside, I think, as you came in, and it highlights our honorees. That newsletter, yes, it was on the sign-in table. So once we finish, we'll give our honorees a chance to leave before we resume the rest of the meeting. Dr. Postlethwaite and Dr. Price, will you please step down front? Honorees, when you hear your name called, please come and stand with Dr. Postlethwaite and Dr. Price as we tell the audience all about you and your achievements. Alright, first, let's give a big round of applause as we welcome to the front some future Masters contenders and all-around champions. The incredible River Bluff High Boys Golf Team. Please come forward as I call your name. Samuel Booth, Jesse Carlisle, Nathaniel Kaufman, Maddox McAmey, Cooper Rayleigh, Howie Roone, and head coach Roger Smith and coach Ben Godfrey. These Gators captured the program's first state championship by winning the Class 5A Division 1 title at Wildwood Golf Course. Oh, does their principal want to come up too? Jacob Smith. Oh, and athletic director, yes, Mr. Beckham. Please come down, yes. These Gators captured the program's first state championship by winning the Class 5A Division 1 title at Wildwood Golf Course. River Bluff finished with a two-day total of 6:02, three shots better than Dorman. In addition, head coach Roger Smith was named the South Carolina Athletic Coaches Association's Boys Golf Coach of the Year, a testament to Coach Smith's exceptional contributions to the success of the River Bluff High Golf Teams. In addition to coaching the boys' golf team, Coach Smith also coached the girls' golf team, who placed second at state this year. Congratulations, Gators and Coach Smith. Tonight, we are proud to recognize several outstanding Future Farmers of America, state winners from Lexington Technology Center. These students recently achieved top honors at the South Carolina State FFA Conference. As I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Henley Gavin, Saisha Kumar, McKenna Limehouse, Jaden Shepherd, Ava Turnage, and teachers Robert Bowyer and Scott Tager. These students placed first in the Dairy Cattle Evaluation, evaluating the cattle's physical characteristics, explaining their various classes, and analyzing a herd record as a team. These exceptional students represent the future of agriculture, leadership, and innovation. Join us in congratulating them on their well-deserved success. Thank you, Mr. Myers, for joining them as well. And now for our final honor of the evening, we are proud to welcome Adriana Garcia, French immersion teacher at Midway Elementary. Adriana, please join us up front. Adriana was recently recognized as the ITES Teacher of the Year. In her nomination, her principal praised her as the embodiment of an exceptional educator, hardworking, collaborative, and deeply dedicated to her students and school community. Oh, we're going to have her principal come join us. Her positive impact is seen not only in the classroom, but also in the strong, supportive relationships she builds with both students and parents. Adriana is also a passionate cultural ambassador, proudly sharing her heritage and enriching the lives of those around her. Congratulations, Adriana, on this well-deserved honor. We'd like to take just a minute to recognize the principals and assistant principals who are in attendance with us tonight, even though our students aren't in schools. You guys are very busy right now, so, but would you please stand so we can recognize you? And now at this time, if you need to leave, we will give you a quick and quiet moment to do so. We're going to wait like 30 seconds for people that are in the overflow room to come back down. That's why I'm like pausing for just a second. Alrighty, we can probably go ahead. Are they coming? Okay, we'll wait a second. Thanks for being patient. We have seats right on the front row for you. All right. We are moving on to item 10.1, which is our 2024 Annual Procurement Audit Report. And I will turn it over to Ms. Miller.
Yes, this evening, we have Mr. Brian Nicholson. He is a director with Malden and Jenkins CPA firm, and he is here to provide the fiscal year 2024 procurement audit report.
Is your microphone on?
Is that better?
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. As Jennifer said, my name is Brian Nicholson, Malden Jenkins. And I'll be kind of going over some highlights of the June 30, 2024 procurement audit report. So just kind of get a brief agenda here. I'll go over kind of an intro to kind of why the agreed upon procedures are required. I'll go over kind of a summary of the report. And then at the end, if there's any questions or if you want to stop me throughout, you know, don't hesitate to do that. So just to reintroduce myself, my name is Brian Nicholson, Malden Jenkins. I was actually, actually the director for the district's June 30, 2024 fiscal audit. And Tim Lyons was the engagement partner for that engagement as well. So when a school district has budgeted expenditures that total or exceed $75 million, including the debt service fund, then a procurement audit is required. And the Office of Audit and Certification, which is a division of the procurement services of the state fiscal accountability authorities, SFAA, they've identified certain risks that these procedures are supposed to address. Those risks include general control procedures, code compliance, sole source emergency and trade-in procurements, compliance with suppliers and IT consultants. It covers surplus property as well as construction, architecture-related services. Now, when the district, or when a entity or school district has these procedures done, if there are any findings that are found throughout those procedures, then the district is required to come up with a corrective action plan. So Lexington County School District One had no findings in our report. So if you read the report, there's a variety of procedures that we did perform. We found no issues or no exceptions, though it may say finding after each procedure. Technically, there are actual, no real findings in the report. And if you got a copy, I'll kind of, I'll go over some brief highlights here. So if you flip to page one, this is our independent accounts report on applying those agreed upon procedures. Management is responsible for the compliance with these requirements. These procedures performed may not address all the items of interest to a user of this report. Therefore, it is the user's responsibility to determine if those interests have been addressed. And then I'll go through some of those procedures. I'm going to actually flip to the very back of the report just to kind of summarize the conclusion. So I believe it's page seven. So we performed these agreed upon procedures in accordance with the attestation standards established by the ASCPA or the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. We were not engaged to and did not conduct an examination or viewing, or review engagement, of which our purpose would be to express an opinion or a conclusion over these procedures. And therefore, we did not express an opinion on these procedures. Just to highlight some of the items that we did review or the procedures that we performed. So we determined that no transactions exceeded the single transaction limit without any approval by the district. And once approved, once that transaction was completed, that that single transaction limit was then lowered subsequent to that being approved. Some other procedures that we looked at is we looked at all the P-cards issued to district employees. We ensured that monthly reviews were taking place and that the people that those procurement cards were, that were issued to were in compliance with the procurement code. We confirmed that no cards have been enacted for six months. We also obtained a review of the procurement procedures of the district. And like I said before, we did all these procedures and these are outlined by the state, and we had no findings as it relates to these procedures. We did look and obtained a listing of all facilities-related expenditures that covered construction or architecture-related services. We were required, so this is all of the expenditures within the fiscal year. We were only required to look at three construction procurements and two architecture procurements. That is all the state requires us to do with the district, with a district the size of Lexington One. Obviously, there's a lot more, which is why we don't express a conclusion or an opinion over the overall compliance with the procurement procedures. And with that, I'll kind of open up for any questions, any comments?
Could you repeat that last comment about how many architectural and how many construction you look at?
So the procedure is required that we look at three construction procurements and two architecture-related. And that is, that is said by the state.
Follow-up question to that is, is are those picked at random? Do you just pull a sample or is, how were those selected, those projects?
So we can either select it haphazardly or randomly. I believe we probably just randomly selected it.
I guess one thing I'll comment on, I compared this report for this year to the one we had previously. And I will say, even though there were no findings on last year's and no findings on this one, I did appreciate how under each section you emphasize what you were looking for, even dollar amounts and things like that. That just, that gave me a lot more clarity on what you were testing for and, and that you didn't find anything based on this level of detail you were looking at. So I did appreciate that.
Thank you. So with agreed upon procedures, they're, they're essentially the procedures that both parties agree to. That's why they call it agreed upon procedures. Technically, we only really have to say there are no findings as a result of these procedures. But as you said, it is a little bit more helpful to the readers if we kind of reiterate what we looked at. Because some of these procedures, we were, we obtained a population, we reviewed certain transactions. If we don't really identify how many, there's some gray area left for interpretation unless we specify exactly what we looked at, which is why we kind of try to do it that way.
Board, any other questions or comments for Mr. Nicholson? Thank you so much for being here tonight.
All right, thank you all.
We are going to move on to item 10.2, which is the Program Evaluation Report. And I'm going to turn that over to Shane Phillips.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you briefly an overview of the 4K programs here in the district. So again, last year, the board initiated a variety of evaluations, one of those being non-CURDAP 4K programs. Knowing that we needed to evaluate all of those programs, we did evaluate the non-CURDAP ones, but we also expanded it to somewhat include the rest of those programs as well, so that we have that information available to us for improving the programs as a whole, with the purpose of assessing the effectiveness and the impact of those 4K programs on the district. So to provide a little bit of context, the Lexington One 4K programs are a public alternative to private options, such as private daycare or private preschools. And these programs prioritize students with the highest levels of need in the district. Across all 4K students, we have 705 total students, with 240 of those in non-CURDAP programs across 10 schools. And just as a reminder, and for those of you who don't know what I'm talking about when I say CERTAP, that is a state program. It is the, oh, I'm going to mess this up. Childhood Early Reading Development Education Program. I think I got that right. But if I didn't, just pretend like I did, okay. The operating budget for the non-CURDAP, then CERTAP provides some funding for programs. Our operating budget for those non-CURDAP programs is approximately $63,000 a year. All right. So this graph shows our pre-K, our four-year-old kindergarten, our 4K enrollment over time. You can see we've gone from about 400 kids up to the 705 that we are hosting now over the course of the past 10 years or so. The overall aim of these programs is to support the development of the whole child in those early education years. We have goals around social skills, developing emotional skills, cognitive skills, physical skills, and creative, creativity and imagination. And we use a curriculum that's aligned with the South Carolina Early Learning Standards, and that's centered largely around play-based learning. So for this evaluation, we used a mixed methods approach. We did some quantitative analysis of KRA data, that's Kindergarten Readiness Assessment, analysis of I-Ready math and reading data. And it's important to know that we used students who, in the 24-25 school year, were in grades K1 and 2. And the reason we did that is we wanted to look at a couple of things. We want to look at those, the experiences of those students while they were in their pre-K, their pre-K years. So we surveyed kindergarten stu, or parents. And then we also did data analysis of the current year's KRA and the KRA of the kids who were in 1 and 2, as well as the I-Ready math and reading diagnostics for K1 and 2. For the survey, which was the second part of the mixed methods analysis, we did an extensive survey of parents and staff. Now, the parents included in that were parents of current pre-K students and parents of current kindergarten students. And the reason we surveyed the parents of the current kindergarten students was to look back and survey all of those kindergarten parents, whether they went to a 4K in Lexington One or went somewhere else or didn't go at all. If they didn't go anywhere else at all, they were removed from the survey. If they went to a private pre-K program or alternative, they were given the same questions as the ones who went to a Lexington One pre-K. That way, we could kind of compare the results between those who went to a district pre-K program and those who went to something else. Okay, so we'll start with the quantitative analysis. The first is kindergarten readiness assessment. So the kindergarten readiness assessment is given during the first, the very first days of school to all kindergarteners, and it looks at exactly what the title says it looks at. How ready are they to perform in kindergarten? And so what we found based on these data was that students attending a Lexington One 4K program showed a clear readiness advantage over those who did not attend a pre-K program. So about 41% of 4K attendees demonstrated kindergarten readiness compared to 31% of non-attendees. And then we also took a look at the non-CURDAP programs versus the CERTAP programs. The non-CURDAP programs outperformed the CERTAP program students in readiness. Now, it's important to note with the CERTAP, non-CURDAP thing, they all follow the same rules for who is going to get in. They follow the same rules as far as what's taught, curriculum, those kinds of things. But in, in our analysis, the non-CURDAP programs outperformed the CERTAP programs in readiness. So for I-Ready, we looked at their diagnostic performance in the spring of each year. And what we found was that in math, we found slightly higher levels of performance in students who did not attend 4K, and that was sustained throughout the higher grade levels. And in reading, there were similar outcomes between the two groups in kindergarten. But as they go up in grade, the 4K participants outpace the non-4K participants. So based on this, we, we see that reading instruction appears to be a strength while math is, is an area of further development for these children. And just kind of laying this out, this is what we just talked about with it going up in grade. So the first set of, so the first set of graphs on the far left are math, and the set on the right are reading. And then it's kindergarten first and second grade in each of those clusters of columns. So you can see that in math, the red column, which is the non-pre-K, outpaces every, every other one of the blue columns in that graph. And then if we look at it in reading, they're almost the same in kindergarten, but then that difference gets a little bit better for the pre-K participants in reading. And this is when we, and we look at it like this, we look at it for those kids who were in poverty versus not in poverty. For the kids who were not in poverty, the difference in math was a little bit more defined than it is for those students who are in poverty. And then in the reading, they outperformed the kids, the kids who were not living in poverty outperform the pre-K participants who are not living in poverty. The opposite is true for the kids in poverty. The kids who participate out, outperformed the kids who did not participate. And then this looks at it comparing students with IAPs to students in the general education group. And you can see that in, of the general education, the, the large majority of our students, math is identical for whether you participated in pre-K or not. And for special ed students, the students who participated in pre-K did a little bit better. In reading, the pre-K participants did better in both categories. Okay. So again, now we move on to the qualitative analysis here. I already told you who the survey was administered to. A couple of sort of broad strokes about the results of this. Overall, there were high levels of satisfaction, no matter where you went to pre-K, as far as the, the outcomes of that, of kids benefiting from a pre-K experience. And the research bears that out, right? So a pre-K experience helps kids do better in school. It helps kids develop socially, emotionally, cognitively, physically, all of those things. So it wasn't a surprise to see high satisfaction across all of the, the two groups that we looked at, the Lexington One pre-K versus the others. Lexington One stood out in a few different areas. First was science education. The second was emergent literacy, particularly in writing, and in social-emotional learning, where they proved to be very effective. The private or other options showed strengths in physical skill development and social-emotional learning as well. Okay. We also looked at a difference between parent and staff perceptions. And so in almost all categories, staff rated their, the programs higher than parents. Again, both groups, very high across the board in general. Staff ratings were generally higher on developmental gains. Staff ratings were higher on academic education effectiveness. What did come out of this comparison was some areas for increased focus. So staff emphasized that following directions, establishing classroom routines or adapting classroom routines, and physical development. establishing classroom routines or adapting classroom routines and physical development was more important than did parents. And then needed resources, the staff highlighted the need for support staff and training, but parents focused on the connections between the school and the family. So based on, across the board, all of the findings, we saw a clear advantage for students who attended 4K as far as kindergarten readiness. For reading achievement, reading performance across the district from our quantitative data is shown as a strength, especially for kids in those subgroups of poverty and special needs. And it's important to know that, that acad- or, excuse me, economic status is an important factor in determining who gets into our pre-K programs. And we do have some high-support special education programs as well in those schools. So the curriculum, we look at, when we look at the results of the quantitative analysis and what came out of the qualitative survey analysis, our program was highly rated for curriculum and learning activities. And we were also rated highly for a safe and healthy environment for those students. So places we can get better. Math instruction, focusing on math instruction enhancements for those younger kids, improving communication with parents, particularly in the area of developmental gains, making sure that they understand how their child is growing within the program. The admissions process came out in a lot of the open-ended stuff as having some areas of challenge that need to be addressed with regard to the process itself and communication with parents about that process. And then finally, and this mainly was based on staff feedback, we need to increase support staff and provide additional professional development for staff. I want to make it a point here to say that, and I guess to remind you guys, that with this evaluation and with all evaluations, what we're doing now is coming back to the program leads and meeting with them afterwards to talk about the findings of these evaluations and have them go through the process that we would have a new program go through as far as making sure that we set clear goals and metrics for future evaluations moving forward. So, and to take the feedback that we got from the evaluation and incorporate that into the further program development as we move forward. So with that, I'll take any questions you guys might have.
Board, do you have any? Can we go back to slide eight and nine?
Oh, can you tell me what those are?
Academic achievement, I-Ready results.
Oh, sure. This one? One of the graphs, sure. That one?
Yeah. I'm just, am I reading this right? That the kids that were not in the program did better than the ones that were? Or no?
Yes. On math.
In math. And then a little bit in reading.
I want to make it clear here, remember, this is a needs-based pre-K program. So these are kids who did not attend pre-K in Lexington 1. That doesn't mean they didn't attend pre-K in Lex- in a private setting or anything else. It also means that those kids in the red columns potentially would not have qualified to be in our programs based on need. And those needs include things like poverty, cognitive issues, you know, social issues. There are lots of needs that qualify these kids to get into these programs. And those have, those are the kids that have to be prioritized. Now, there's a waiting list. If those slots are not all filled, other students can come in. But those needs are prioritized first. So there's a, there's a clear difference in the demographic of the red bar and the blue bar.
Okay, and then so the next slide, same thing? Because these are the kids in poverty?
Correct. And they're almost the same for those two groups, for the pupils in poverty. And in reading, the ones for the pupils in poverty are better. A large portion of our kids are the pupils in poverty.
So would you say the ones in the blue are more at-risk kids?
Well, the ones in the second cluster of columns are more at risk in general. The ones who are in blue qualified for and were admitted into the program.
I'm chair. I think it might be helpful, when you say qualified, just for those of us newer to the board or also for the general public, what are the qualifying stipulations for someone who would qualify for the program from a needs perspective versus someone who would not?
Well, I can certainly get that information for you in great detail and provide it.
Shane, I can, I have that.
You go and jump on that?
I was gonna pull that. So we use the same criteria that you would need to get into the CerDAP, a CerDAP classroom, which is either Medicaid, 185% federal poverty based on the number in the household and total family income, those are the first two, or a DIAL score scoring in two out of the three subtests in the bottom 25th percentile.
My ignorance, what is a DIAL score?
DIAL score, there, and I'm looking at Jessica, so she can tell me if I'm wrong. There are three subtests, one's motor, one's language, and one's conceptual skills. Those are the three subtests for DIAL. So it's an assessment.
Just for clarification, if a student went to a private preschool, where do they fall in this? Red or blue?
Red.
Red. Okay.
So is this saying that we're not doing great? That we're just doing kind of mediocre? Or, I'm just trying to like bluntly, can you just tell me?
I don't think it's saying that at all. I think, I think.
Just want to be sure.
I think when you look at the discrepancy here, for example, in that first one, I, and again, my eyes are getting bad. You have a three-point discrepancy for students not in poverty. Okay? So not in poverty means they may have hit that DIAL score, which means they're in the bottom, what was it, 20?
Fifth percentile.
25th percentile. Okay? They're performing almost the same as everybody else who in the district who did not attend that program, did not qualify for that program. So while the bars are shorter, and certainly we need to do work in math in those early grades, I don't think this is a lot to be concerned about when you consider the difference between the kids who are in the red bar and the kids who are in the blue bar.
So would it be fair to say that without the program, they might be further down?
I think it would be very fair to say that, yes.
Got it.
I have one more question, and I'm not sure if this is for you. I'm looking at a document that Mrs. Gaskins was nice enough to send me about each school and the number of students accepted and those remaining on a waitlist. We have some schools that have four classes. We have some schools that have one class. But the class, or the schools that have at least more than one class available have pretty much no waitlist, if any waitlist at all. How do we decide how many classes at each school? Because it looks like we have half of the people we've been able to accept still on the waitlist.
So we've added a number of classes over the past few years, and we've based those additions. One of the factors we've looked at is the number of students on the waitlist. So in past years, the number of students still on at this time of year has been between like 500 and 600. So we have reduced that significantly over time by adding those classes.
I have one question. Under your recommendations for improvement, you have improved communication of developmental gains to parents. So I guess the question I have is, what, if you can illustrate in a few words, what is the communication that happens now? I mean, we're talking about improvement, but I'm curious as to what does a parent find out about their child through the program?
Right, so I'm gonna defer to Jessica for that.
So parents receive a quarterly progress report, just like they do in grades, kindergarten and above. We also have two required parent conferences per year. That's a CerDAP guideline. In addition to that, we host a math, family engagement event slash activity, and a literacy, family engagement event each year. And then teachers are actively using Parent Square to engage parents. And then those that aren't engaged through Parent Square, of course, they interact with them in other ways.
I appreciate that. So I kind of have a two-part question about that. I know sometimes when we have families that are in poverty, they're not as technologically advanced. So is that communication something that's purely electronic? Or is there paper or? I was curious as to what the improved communication is actually doing for a lot of those families.
Sure, so we use multiple ways to communicate. Families, you know, are communicated with via phone calls, email. If a paper note is what works, you know, we have lots of grandparents and even great-grandparents raising their grandchildren. And so we communicate with those families the best way that we can. And when we're still not able to get in contact with them and our, with our hardest-to-reach families, you know, in our Title I schools, we have family liaisons who often will make, you know, even a home visit alongside the school administrator or the school counselor to get in touch with those families.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Board, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, we're gonna move on to item 10.3, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Gaskins for the introduction of policy IG.
Thank you, and yes, this is an introduction, not first reading. And earlier tonight, we mentioned the Curriculum Effectiveness Audit that happened last year. And this is one of the policies, kind of the leading policy that was recommended for revisions with that, in those audit findings. And so in addition to the revisions you see tonight, to the policy itself, we have also, as one of the steps in our strategic plan this year, developed a curriculum management plan and aligned assessment, professional learning, and instructional technology plans, all using the recommendations from the Curriculum Effectiveness Audit 2. So some things you may not see in policy have been developed in procedure. And so we've already received some feedback related to the introduction that we'll work to implement for first reading. I think we need to reference the curriculum management plan in terms of things like the curriculum review cycles and the other steps that we're going to ensure. Maybe not spell out all the details, but at least reference those things that will be in the curriculum management plan and addressed that way. You do see some information about career clusters here. That's based on the model policy and aligned with the Education and Economic Development Act and our school, our state's school counseling model. So that's where you see that language come from. Happy to answer any more questions or take your feedback tonight or between now and first reading.
So board, typically, we have our introduction in board brief. And so we got that tonight so that we can do first reading in July and approve it in August. And so, I mean, if you have something to say tonight, we can. If not, you can share your thing, your thoughts with Dr. Price or Ms. Gaskins, and we'll discuss it more at our July meeting. We good?
Okay. Let's move on to 10.4, which is the first reading of the deletion of policy JJIE and JJIER, student drug testing. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Cooper.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The administration is recommending discontinuing the student drug testing program. This program is written into board policy, thus necessitating its deletion. Based on our research, very, very few districts across the state are doing this. And in an effort to align our budget requests with our budget priorities, we're recommending the deletion of this policy.
Right, so we chose to strike that from our budget for this upcoming year. So that, I guess that would make sense to align our policy to something we're not funding. So first reading, board, do you have any comments on this? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, we are moving on to superintendent's report. Am I turning this over to you?
Yes. I'm gonna move this so. I'm finished. I have a couple of things to say before I start my timer, because I have 15 minutes for this presentation. Recently, I was in Mrs. King's room at New Providence Elementary, and she had this kind of headband that she wore to signal that she did not want to be interrupted. So.
All these years, I could have been doing this.
And I liked it so much, she sent me one. And I'm going to bequeath it to Dr. Price. And I would wear it tonight, but I think that adults aren't quite so adept at accepting symbols such as that one as six-year-olds are. So I'm going to forego the wearing of the bunny, whatever those are. Yeah. So I'll just say, the other thing I want to say before I start, a lot of people compare a job like the superintendency to being the captain of a ship. And I, I first became a superintendent in 1985, 86. And I didn't find that that was my experience. It's more like air traffic controller to me. You help people get really clear about where they want to go, find the best pathways to get there, and then make sure that they arrive safely and coordinate things during their journey. So that's, I say all that to say, we're going to talk about some accomplishments that have occurred the past three years. We, those accomplishments are due to the work of others, just like the air traffic controller. I didn't do the work of the journey. The people in this room, the leaders sitting along that wall, the board, and our 4,000 personnel actually accomplished this work. So I will talk about it, but it belongs to everyone. So that's actually, I think, the other superintendent's report. So my superintendent's report says superintendent's three-year look back. And I don't know how to speak to that one, so. Just keep going? Okay, thank you. And thank you, Daniel, for your help. Gosh, I lost some seconds on that. That is just too bad. No, I'm not gonna start over, thank you. So when we met in August of 2022, we talked about our priorities, the role of the board and the role of the superintendent. And I want to thank the board for staying above the red line, for understanding that the more you ask us to get involved in constituent service by working below that red line, the less we can work on the strategic priorities of the board. So you've been wonderful, as were the boards that preceded you with whom I worked. So thank you so much for that. August through December, it was supposed to be a six-month interim period, but we got started right away with electronic board agenda processes, the weekly calls and board briefs that have been mentioned tonight. We established the board goals. We began working on key performance indicators and established the annual work calendar. The first one of those was September 6, 2022. And we started being really clear about what we were all going to do. We began working on a different organizational structure and then started the annual meeting where board members come and sit with principals to do the data reviews. This slide shows an example of what the work plan looks like three years later. This is a page from the sample work plan for 2025, 26. This is just the board's work plan. There are many more detailed plans at the school and district levels. If we think about the strategic plan that was in place in 2018, 19, it was expiring in 22, 23. So we took the performance goals, one of which was about performance, the others of which were about processes that needed to be improved, and created our priorities for 22, 23. Priority 2 talked about increasing student achievement. And the other priorities had to do with rebuilding the systems that had been lost or destroyed or damaged during the COVID crisis. So that's another important point I wanted to, I wanted to make. No matter where you were in the country, your, your school systems were devastated as a result of COVID. And there are many, many school leaders everywhere who weren't able to continue their relationships with their districts because no matter what decision we made during COVID, it was wrong. because no matter what decision we made during COVID, it was wrong. And it was a very contentious time, as we all remember. So we were rebuilding from COVID when I came back into the district. By 23, 24, we had established key performance indicators. And we worked on that the second half of our first year here. And those indicators were looking primarily at student success rates and how we would know if what we were doing was effective. One priority had to do with understanding how people were engaging with us and how they felt about our interaction with them. We asked for a one-year extension on that 2018 strategic plan so that we could begin to align the system components here. So we started with the technical core. The core business, as someone mentioned this evening, is about learning. It's how much learning we have produced. So in order to do that, we had to align the intended curriculum with the taught curriculum and the tested curriculum and then make sure all the other ancillary services and departments were really supporting that work. So as we thought about that, the Lexington One graduate profile would be where we want to be, what we want our students to know. The instructional elements are about how we'll get there. The curriculum effective, effectiveness audit helped us pinpoint where we were in that journey so we would understand what to do next. The key performance indicators were helping us understand how we'll know when we're making progress on the journey. And then finally, the new five-year strategic plan was the flight plan or the trip. If you're old enough, you remember the AAA trip tickets that you would get that sort of say, this is what you do next and next and next. And then last year, our second year working on this, each school was building the capacity for this journey and determining the pivot points and shifts that they would have to make. This slide simply talks about the importance of a strong technical core and quotes some research. And I wanted to mention that the theory of action, that there are many different learning theories, but the theory that we have built our work on was developed over a lifetime by Fenwick English, who talked about the fact that you have to be really clear about what we, you want students to know, understand, be able to do. And the written curriculum needs to be much smaller than the time that teachers have to teach it because they have to do pre-teaching, re-teaching and enrichment, as well as, as teach the intended curriculum. And then what's tested obviously, obviously has to be a smaller subset of that. When those concentric circles get out of alignment, students are unfairly tested because they haven't been taught the intended curriculum from which the test is derived. Done well, curriculum alignment takes at least three years in a smaller district and at least five years in a larger district to get right. And so it's after five years that we really should see some, some good momentum. So we've talked about these, these parts that we're feeding into the strategic plan, what we want our students to know, understand, be able to do, how we would do that work, where we are on this journey and the strategic plan to pull all those pieces together. So that created then the new strategic plan to take us through 2029, 2030. Our mission is to guide all students to learn, grow and excel. So we're very clear about what it is we're trying to do. And then our outcomes are to have every student college, career. And in my mind, that would be and military-ready. Our five-year targets then were focused specifically on student successes and have been broken down into bite-sized pieces at every school level. Every principal here has been working on a, with their school teams on work plans and they have a bite-sized piece that's appropriate for them in terms of the progress that they would make on these and other indicators. So our strategic plan contained three primary goal areas. One was academic excellence and the acceleration of learning. And each of those goal areas had strategic actions listed under them. So what evidence do we have that we've made any progress in the academic excellence and acceleration of learning? We've talked about these seminal pieces that we have created with the graduate profile at the top, the explanation of, of those elements at the bottom, and then the instructional framework, how we think about instruction in this district so that we make sure that we're creating the right environment for learning. We're planning based on where the students were when they came to us. We're implementing the plan, making adjustments where the plan didn't work, assessing the outcomes, and then, of course, growing the profession so that we have developed the skills that we need in order to create this, to complete this educational PDSA cycle. This year, we had four areas of focus. The curriculum clarity, which is the first year of that three-to-five-year plan of getting that alignment right. And it's messy at first. I know some of you heard from teachers who said, whoa, this is way out of whack. And it could have been. It just takes time to get these things. I guess if it were a piece of machinery, what would we call calibrated? The impactful instruction, making sure that we're, we're testing fairly, assessing fairly frequently where our students are so we can make adjustments where we need to. That, of course, requires actionable metrics. And then focusing on those optimal conditions. So what does that mean? Here are some examples. Optimal conditions would be increasing the number of 4K classrooms because we have evidence that that's making a difference, particularly for those students who don't have the opportunity to develop their learning skills prior to coming to a public school. And we provided intensive professional learning around reading basics, particularly at the elementary level, and then the mathematics strategies because next year, we're getting a new math curriculum, new materials and new course sequence. And then we've expanded behavioral supports because that's one of the high priorities, teachers told us we needed to work on so that they could teach without disruption to 24 or 20 or 28 or so other students in the classroom while we make sure that the one or two disruptive students get the kind of support that they need. So what does this look like in achievement? There is an upward trend in the number of students demonstrating kindergarten readiness. And as we explained, over time, we've tried to make sure that the students who are being accepted in our 4K programs are those who need it most, who are most behind their counterparts. Another category of students, in addition to the ones Mary mentioned, Ms. Gaskins mentioned, are the McKinney-Vento students who are homeless. So as, as we've pretty much increased the trend line, at least on the 4K readiness, we, we noticed our projection for 24, 25 is a little down. That is a projection. We haven't completed all that assessment yet. But we accepted many more students with much higher needs. So we sort of have to balance watching how our students are progressing with the particular needs of the students that we're taking in. So we're also increasing the number of students, as you heard, from about 400 back three years ago to over 700 next year. As we look at SC ready trends, I will mention that this school year's results are embargoed. So what we're showing you here are preliminary. But we have, the folks in the audience and teachers, parents and students have increased reading to the point that it surpasses our pre-COVID levels. Mathematics, we think, is still going to be just slightly below pre-COVID levels. But we are focusing intently on mathematics. This year, 18 of 25 schools increased their mathematics scores over last year. And our elementary and middle school math, as I said, we, we think are perhaps two or, within two or three points of where we were before the pandemic. If we look at high school, then, we see that there have been steady improvements in the end-of-course assessments. The end-of-course tests in biology, algebra and history have improved to the point that we believe they have now surpassed, equaled or surpassed where they were prior to COVID. And as I said, these EOC data are, are perhaps not, not finalized. There's in preliminary form. I think I may have mentioned that English surpassed where we were. So I'm going to move on to one last slide in this academic part. And that is the Learn, Grow, Excel Playbook. And if you look at the categories under that are bulleted there, what we have are those technical core elements. The curriculum assessment that we had done was done by a company that was established by Fenwick English, the same person whose theories we're using in terms of the curriculum alignment. So we know we're testing or having audited exactly the pieces that we are working to try to get streamlined and in place here. So we see the assessment, the curriculum management, the instructional technology, and then the professional learning, making sure that all of us who've been in the profession for a while keep increasing our skills and learning new ones. Moving on then to positive climate and school experience, the second strategic action. Here are some examples of work that's been done in that area. This year, last summer, we began implementing the crisis alert system that's prepared by Cintegix. It's the best in the country. We began making sure that all of our people were equipped and trained to use the Cintegix system. And although we have had a, a few false alarms, we'd rather have false alarms than no alarms. So we're, we're working to reduce that for next year. We opened the South Carolina School Safety Training Center. We see their chief, Mark, the sled chief, Mark Keel, the governor, the state superintendent of education. And I do want to acknowledge that this is a conversation that was underway before I came to Lexington One, but it is up and running. My 15 minutes is up, but I'm going to go on for one minute. Since 2022, we've had 17 new school leaders, more than 75 board policies and five new board of trustee members. So when we think about culture, we have replaced half the people who are leading the districts. It's really important to keep focused on who we are, why we are and what we are. We have reimagined the roles for those advisory groups. And we actually thanked, to Dr. Price implemented the day-long listening sessions at every school. In trying to engage more closely with parents, we implemented Parent Square. If you've looked at the district website lately, it's been completely revamped. It's, it's beautiful and I think very effectively organized. Again, trying to reach more people, more families. We were named a Purple Star District for our service and outreach to military families. And we've established those annual registration help sessions in each of the communities, which really help increase registration from 87% to 97% before the start of the school year. If one wonders why our budget has increased, it's because the third goal is looking at stewardship of resources. When we begin to look at where we were and where we are, we see that the state allows 35 students per one teacher at the high school level. Here, we allocate for half that amount. So it means actually we allocate twice as many teachers as required by the state for high school. Although the ratios aren't quite that starkly different at elementary and middle, those ratios are also, also much lower than what the state requires. And that costs money. It's expensive. Along with that, teachers have realized a 38% pay increase since the 21, 22 school year here, between 21, 22 and next year. And that is a wonderful thing. It doesn't put us at the top of the state in terms of recruiting teachers, but it keeps us well in the competitive ranges. The outreach included a lot of visits from various departments here at the district. This one happens to be about the HR visits, but almost every department has done their own form of outreach. We've strengthened the system nets by employing in-house counsel. We've dealt with some really difficult lawsuits and settled them with, without a great deal of fanfare. We refined a lot of processes and tried to initiate audits to help us understand again exactly where we are on that journey. We need to close by looking at our new schools. Lakeside opened in 2022. We named the North Lake Community Center and opened it in 2022. We opened the transportation facility in 2023. We opened South Lake in 2024. And as you can see, a lot of work has occurred in three years. If you all wonder why you're exhausted, I know the people in the audience are saying, that's why. That's why. So I'll just close with the fact that at the beginning of 2022, 23, we read Jim Collins' little monolith about good to great for the social sectors. And I think we've been pretty consistent following those five principles. We confronted a brutal reality that we were left with after COVID. We, we've worked to get the right people on the bus in the right seats. We've really clearly outlined our purpose with the hedgehog concept, being really clear about what it is we do and how we do it and why we do it. You have many Level Five leaders in this room. Dr. Price is certainly a Level Five leader, as are many folks sitting here and others who were unable to be with us tonight. And what we hope all of this will have created for Lexington One is the flywheel effect. So as these parts begin to come together and it's the Lexington One way of doing things, our processes become clear to everyone because we've had this smooth transition of leadership, that you'll be off, off and away. Congratulations. Today is your day. You're off to great places. You're off and away. And I wish all of you and Dr. Price the very best. I thank the board for your very generous compliments at the beginning of the meeting and want to say again how much I've enjoyed working here and what a big privilege it has been for me and my family. So thanks to all of you.
All right, Dr. Price, I think I'll turn it over to you now. He's logging in his computer.
One more way that I get to follow Dr. Postlewate. Mine will be very brief. Once we scroll back, there you go. Too far. So just a couple of updates. One more slide. So just a couple of things to update you on. The first one is an update. We've had the opportunity to move some more items into our 22 bond interest fund to capitalize on those available funds before we lose the opportunity to do so. So I'll let Mr. Cooper present briefly on those items.
Yes, sir. Thank you. These are the two projects that I alluded to at the last board meeting. They are 24B. They're part of the 24B 8% bond. They are board-approved projects. And we are moving them to the 2022 bond interest as it will, it will cease to be available this fall. So these projects will be completed this, this summer and it will allow us to use those funds first. The funds that you see there that are part of the 24B bond, they will be moved to a line item titled Future Projects. And so that, that money will exist there. And as new projects come about, we will bring them forward for board, for board approval and use the funds in the correct order.
And as a reminder, one of the things that we'll be bringing to you in the fall is a plan for the new fiscal year projects. So that is coming to you in the fall. The next thing is, as Dr. Postlewate alluded to earlier, in your board packet, you have access to the 25, 26 board work calendar. And it includes a lot of opportunities for you all to take advantage of throughout the school year. In addition to that, it outlines regularly occurring items that we're going to be bringing back to board presentations that you've asked about. And it also includes the data deliverables. And if you remember, back in the spring, we all participated in a data landscape activity where you all identified specific data points that you wanted to spend more time learning about and exploring that reflects student outcomes. That's part of our book study. So those are now included on your board work plan. So as you peruse through that, you will find those there. And in addition to that, you adopted your board goals recently. that, you adopted your board goals recently. Those board goals are also mapped out on the work calendar for the upcoming school year. So you will see all of that reflected there. And a special thanks to Ms. Halliday for picking up all of those different items and putting them in a format that we can all keep track of. So thank you to her for helping out with that. And then finally, you know, after Mr. Rice gave praise about board briefs, I kind of feel weird about asking about this now. So, you know, during the summer, most of our students and most of our teachers are enjoying their summer. So there's not as many school-related activities that are going on. Now, there's still work being done. There's interviews going on. There's evaluations being done. There's professional learning taking place. And there's a lot of strategic planning going on for the upcoming school year. But the suggestion or the request is to, because of that, and not so many highlights with student and teacher activity, is to scale back on our summer board briefs and do one addition for June, one addition in July, and then resume normal weekly submissions when we return to school in August. So I just present that for consideration.
So Dr. Bryce, since I was the board brief person, I think, I think that's actually a good idea because just having been on the board for a couple of years, things really slow down in the summer. And I know it takes a lot from Ms. Halliday and for the rest of the staff to put that together. I think with the amount of action that's happening in schools, once a month is enough to capture everything that's actually taking place. So even though I really like board brief, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Once a month, I don't know how everybody else feels, but since I'm carrying the board brief torch, I wanted to say, I think one month is okay.
Board members, do you have any other thoughts to add to that?
Concur with Mr. Rice.
Yeah. And I think especially since we have our weekly phone calls, that's good.
We will keep you informed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask one question about capital projects? On the 2022 capital projects list, Pelear Elementary's HVAC repair and additions, are we still expecting that to get completed this summer and be on budget?
Yes, ma'am.
I heard an audible, "I hope so," from this side of the room. I feel you, especially by August. And then what decides what moves a project up earlier compared to others? Is it just luck of the draw? Or I'm sure there's reasoning. I just wanted to explain that to the public.
These, these projects being brought forth earlier aren't being, they're not being fast-tracked. They are just projects that are being completed this summer, so we can fully complete them with when these, those funds expire. So that's why they were picked. It was based on just the timing at which they would be able to be completed.
Good. All right. Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Cooper, for that. Go ahead, Dr. Bryce.
There's one other item, and that is our monthly finance report. And so with that said, we'll turn it over to Ms. Miller to pick this up for there and close out the superintendent's update.
Okay. I'm assuming I just need to keep going forward. Is that correct, everybody, for the slides? We're getting close. Okay. This evening, we do have the May 31st, 2025 Finance Update. You can see there, our local revenue is approximately $129 million. Our state revenue is approximately $189 million. And then our transfers are approximately $25 million. Again, those transfers are truly state revenue just recorded in another fund. So that brings our total revenue to approximately $343 million. You can see there, our largest percentage is our state revenue, especially if you consider that transfers are also state revenue. And we're down to 37.7% of local funding. And as I have been projecting, that we expected that to level off at 37% local and the remainder 63 at state. And so I think we're right on track with where we thought we were going to end up at June 30th. Interesting enough, talking about state revenue, when somebody asks, how do you budget your revenue? Why don't you just start with your revenue? The reason we can't is I just found out last month what our revenue is for the year that ends in a couple of weeks. And so you can see there on the far right in the green, we are actually having a decrease of approximately $563,000 in revenue from what we projected during budget last year. And so that is a result of the 135th day adjustment. So what happens across the state with the new funding formula, each district has their 135th day counts. And based on where you fall in the weighted proportionate share across the districts, across the entire state, determines what your revenue is going to be. And so we no longer can project what it's really going to be unless you knew every district's enrollment and weighted percentages. And if you might recall, mid-year, we did receive some projections there in the pink column where we thought we were actually going to get 811,000 more than what we had budgeted. And that was based on the 45th day counts that came out. Obviously, there was a pretty big swing. If you take 800 one direction with a 563 the other direction, fortunately, we did not adjust mid-year based on thinking we would get more money. So it's not as painful hearing 563,000 when it could have been 1.3 million. So when we think about that, when we're looking at our budget, just know revenue does change, and this is part of why it is very hard to project exactly where it'll be. Moving down, this is just a summary of what you have in your board packet with the detailed of the revenue for May 31st. Moving down to the expenditures, they're at approximately $317 million. Again, the largest portion there is going to be your salary and benefits, which are at about 87, 88% of the budget. No big change in what we're projecting at year end for those amounts. Just looking at my notes real quick, make sure I'm not missing anything. And then moving on to, that's your summary of what you have in your detailed packet, which I know we can't even read that, but you do have it if you wanted to see it in that format. And here is our general fund balance projection as of May 31st. You can see we're trending down again each month. One more month to go. I do think we're going to, again, land pretty much close to where we started the year. You can fluctuate, you know, 0.25% with a budget as large as ours. If you put that in context of a $300 grocery bill, a 0.25% fluctuation is 75 cents. And so I think we are on track to come within that for June, at June 30th, '25. And then the last slide is going to be our procurement report. And TEAL is the number of purchase orders and procurements we had for the month. We had 784, and we had 32 of those that we have considered unauthorized. Nothing alarming is jumping out. I'll continue to monitor if I see any trends. Remember, these can be as simple as missing an internal signature on a form. So we'll continue to look at those as we go forward. And with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board, do you have any questions for Ms. Miller?
Ms. Miller, I have one question. One of the items that was included in, in this particular item was the general fund balance report. And I was just comparing June 30th, I guess our projected fund balance from June 30th, 2024 was like 114 million. But May 31st, 2025, we're projecting 140 million. Do we anticipate that, I don't know exactly how much we pull from fund balance, but do we anticipate we would potentially lose as much as 26 million or expend 26 million so that our June 30th, 2025 is close to that 114? Or do you think it'll be higher?
I think we're going to be closer to the 114. What's going to happen is you'll have this one last month of revenue that's coming in. But you have to remember, we have salaries still being paid. And with the accrual accounting, those salaries that get paid in July get posted back into June. So our expenditures will be much higher in June than what you would typically see in a month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
One really quick thing. What, can you just remind me what the percentage is? Is 16 point that we have to keep?
Per board policy, it's 16.67%. So two months of general fund operating activity.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Our next agenda item is citizens' participation, but I don't have any cards. So we don't have any. Okay. We will move on then to our action items. Do I hear a motion that the board approved the 2025-2026 General Fund Operating Budget?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the 2025-2026 General Fund Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. Dr. Price, is there anything you or your team would like to address before the board discussion?
No, ma'am. I appreciate the board's involvement throughout this entire process, as was recapped earlier tonight. It's been a long journey. It started with a lot of different options. And because of all the feedback that's been provided, it's gotten us to the point where we are today. I want to thank, number one, everyone in the room who played a part in crafting the budget, and especially to Ms. Miller and her team, and Mrs. Price and her team, Ms. Gaskins, and everyone, Ms. Ruth, Mr. Cooper. There were a lot of hands involved in this. It started with probably about a three-hour work session that happened inside the boardroom, trying to identify the needs of the district and ensuring that they're aligned with our strategic plan. From that, we started researching dollar amounts to go with these items. Then came the particularly difficult task of trying to prioritize them. So it's been a, a long process, but I think we've tried to be as transparent, as transparent as possible, but also stick to the expectations and guidelines that were provided to us by the board. So I appreciate everyone's help in crafting the budget and the guidance that the board has provided along the way.
Thank you, Dr. Price. With that said, board, any discussion before we move to a vote?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we please go back to these math coaches one more time? Can you walk us through, for those of us that don't live this life, the math coaches do not work directly with the students per se, although they're going to be in the classrooms. What, what does a math coach do for the end result for our students at the end of the day? What do we expect that these math coaches are going to, when we pull a report up next year, what might it look like?
We would intend for our student achievement in math to increase. This year, we've implemented some very intensive math professional learning, and we've already seen a good bit of improvement as a result of doing that professional learning. We believe that if math coaches, we had full-time math coaches in schools to really support teachers, to implement that professional learning that we're investing in, and, you know, be there daily to do that coaching and follow-up, you're going to get more of a return on the investment for that professional learning as well. But it looks like planning with teachers, especially with our new math standards and curriculum materials assessments, the new standards are much more conceptual in nature, which takes a very different teaching approach when it comes to math. So the planning piece is going to be critical. They will be doing model lessons for teachers to show them what it looks like to teach those lessons. They'll be observing and giving teachers feedback, hosting professional learning sessions, helping interventionists decide the right intervention for students who are served in like a tier-two or tier-three situation. They also have the, really the critical content knowledge in math. Many of our elementary and early childhood teachers weren't required to take many courses in their pre-service programs. And so learning that content knowledge is essential, especially when kids have skills gaps. And we need to really understand how to target those gaps and address them with instruction. Math coaches are essential because they have that rich content knowledge to be able to do that.
I appreciate that. I'm just going to make a statement really quick. I've, I know I've been very vocal, so I just want to say thank you to all of the team and the senior leadership and all of our currently two superintendents that we get one more meeting with. I know that it's not easy when those of us that don't live your job every day are asking lots of questions. That can probably seem a little invasive. So I very much appreciate that. I want to acknowledge the work that goes into this. Before I cast my vote tonight, I want to share a reason about why I'm going to vote the way that I am. Over the last several weeks, I have probably read more budget documents than I've read in my entire life. I've reflected really deeply on what this budget means ultimately for our students. At the end of the day, I don't lose sight that this is who we are serving. I've been, I wouldn't say critical, but I have been vocal that I don't necessarily support adding all the assistant principals and the math coaches at one time. It's not that I don't believe that those roles have any value. It's that I think in the past, we, and not with this leadership team, but we've been here before, where boards have been told that they're going to receive information about how these positions or these expenditures have driven a result. However, despite those concerns, I will end up voting yes on the budget tonight, but I want to be really clear that that vote comes with some conditions, at least for me. It's contingent on seeing clear, measurable, student-focused outcomes that are tied directly to the position and the program. And I think that our board needs to take a really good look at our policy and making sure that our policy framework is set up well for future boards and future superintendents. So we don't find ourselves sitting here going, did it work? Did it not work? That there's a plan for the budget moving forward. But if we find ourselves in the same position next year where we can't tie a direct position to a direct outcome for a student, for me, I will not vote to increase mileage. So for me, this is a one-time leap of faith and trust. And I know Dr. Postleway's on her way out, but I want to say how much I trust Dr. Price as well. He has called me back, texted me, sat down and spent a lot of time with me. For, so for the public that might sit here and think that we don't look at a lot of information, I can only speak for myself, but I promise you, this team looks at a lot of information. And there's been a lot of thought that's gone into this. And so I'm going to trust our superintendent to lead us towards these goals for students. So that's where I stand. Thank you, Ms. Flashnick. Any other comments?
Yeah, you know I have to say something. First of all, everything Ms. Flashnick said, I'm in probably total agreement with her. Definitely a big thanks to the staff. Everyone in the district has worked to put this together. This vote is probably one of the most important votes we take every year. It gets to the point of, you know, put your, I guess, put your money where your mouth is. And so like Ms. Flashnick said, you know, this is kind of a one-time deal for me as well. I've put my trust in Dr. Price. He's always been straightforward with me, that they will give us those, you know, indicators that what they're doing is working. I've seen it with what happened last year. You know, I think they said 18 and 25, you know, scores have increased. So, so far, they're doing what they say they're going to do. I've been a big, I've been high on the math coaches myself. I think this year, going to have to give that a little benefit of the doubt just because of the new standards coming in. It's going to be, you know, new across the board. Am I 100% you know, A-OK with everything in this budget? No, I'm not. But I do want to point out some things that I am happy about in this budget. Number one, I'm glad we're instituting the salary study. We know our teachers and staff in the district are probably the hardest working in the state, and we need to make sure that we retain them and recruit them to stay here. So that is a big positive. I think we're taking the right direction to make sure we, make sure y'all are taken care of. Second thing is, is I've seen firsthand the assistant principal. This is where me and Ms. Flashnick may disagree a little bit. But I've seen firsthand what not having that extra superintendent, or that extra assistant principal does. It's going to get an assistant principal that has literally been working five years doing nothing but testing and getting them back in the classroom and getting them with the students. That's big in my book. And one thing you'll learn about me is I'm a big proponent of athletics. To me, in my academic career through high school, athletics were probably just as important as my academics. I'm happy to see that we're increasing the budget for middle schools. I was kind of bewildered when I heard that middle school sports didn't even have a budget. And that area in athletics has grown greatly in our district. So I think that money will help as well. I also like to see the, the extra money going to the high schools with all the new sports coming into the high schools and keeping up with that. So like I said, I will be voting yes for this budget. I will be looking at, like I would do every year, where we, you know, provide this budget. We're going to use fund balance, and then at the end of the year, we don't have to use the fund balance. So we'll see what happens next year. But like I said, I'm not 100% in favor of everything, but it's not stopped me because I think overall, we're in a good shape. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti.
And I'll just say that Nick stole my speech. I completely echo everything he said. Teacher salaries, that was huge for us. I'm really, really proud of that work, even though I wasn't on the committee. Super excited. Super excited about that. I agree with the assistant principals. I think it's, I think it's necessary. The KPIs, I think, you know, we all agree that we're going to be really excited to see that data. And I know you're probably going to say, it's too soon, but I really would like to see something come out maybe December. And then again, the end of the year, I know there's going to be new numbers coming out. And I know for new programs and things, it takes time. I totally understand that. But I, I think as a board, I think we'd like to see something. So I'm anxious for that meeting this week. But overall, I will be approving the budget. Thanks, thanks for all the hard work. Really appreciate it.
Do I?
Neither one of you stole my speech. I, I do want to say this, we're one team. Whether we're sitting here in these seats, or whether you're in the classroom, or whether you're an administrator, whether you're a district, whether even the bus driver, we're all one team. We're here to educate kids. We're here to help them become better. And the way I look at this, I, I support the budget wholeheartedly. Although I have been one of the people that talked about KPIs, and I will tell you this, I'm also the one who said, trust but verify. But I will say one thing with Dr. Price, we had a good conversation the other day, and I said, you know, I've said, trust but verify, and depending on how people's ears are attuned, they hear it as a term of offense. But some hear it as a, a point of advocacy. So I'm kind of changing it up to make sure you understand it's a question of advocacy, because it's really trust, but seek to understand. So when I ask a question, you must remember, everybody, I'm an engineer. We want to know how the widget works. So when I say trust but verify, I'm asking, how does that light switch work? So if that light switch breaks, I know how to fix it. I know what works in there. So, all I'm going to say to y'all is this, we've gone through three readings, so it's like a track team. We're one team, we're running a relay race, and it's to help kids cross the finish line and win. So we've gone through the first reading, we passed the baton. The second reading, we passed the baton. This is the third reading. Now, all of you educational leaders, we're handing you the baton to run the final leg of the race and take our kids across the finish line. So I'll be voting yes also, because I think this budget will help us do that.
I wanted to add that I am very, very impressed with this board this year. This has probably been the most in-depth dive that this board has ever taken into the budget process. And Mr. Pizzuti, Ms. Flashnick, your concerns and your, your words are heard and very appreciated. And I think it lets the people know that, how dedicated we are to what we do. This is important. This is very important. This is the, the whole crux of everything that we do. And it all goes down to one thing, and that's our students. And I'm just very pleased to be a part of this, and I want to thank my colleagues and all of you for all of the dedication and the hard work that you do every day for our students.
All right. With that, we have a motion on the table to approve the 2025 general fund operating budget. And a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. We are moving on to item thirteen point two, which is our procurement review panel designation. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Miller.
Yes, ma'am. This is part of a requirement per our procurement code. Each year, the board has to make an election whether they will serve as a procurement review panel or if they will nominate members to serve on that panel. This is something that has to be done annually. The first year I was here, the board did not make an election, and so by default, the board was the panel. And we did have one protest, and then we quickly realized that we wanted to delegate those responsibilities based on the code that's allowable to experts in those industries that could be specific to what we're actually having the procurement about. And I do want to take a little bit of time, and I'm sorry, I'm just squeezing this in, but thank you to our procurement team for the outstanding audit with no findings and for all the principals and APs in this room, because you make it happen, all the department heads. I know it gets frustrating getting all our lovely notes from procurement, but thank you so much. And let's give procurement a round of applause. And I apologize for hijacking, but it kind of fit because it was procurement. So at this time, the board can decide whether they do want to serve as the panel or if they would want to make nominations as they have in the past. And I believe there is an attachment that the board has to look at to review as who served on the panel prior.
Right. So board, just for clarification, 2023, we began appointing a panel. So tonight, we have two options. Well, we could either not appoint one or appoint one, so we'll need a motion for that. And then if we choose to appoint a procurement review panel, we'll need to make a motion to appoint a board member to serve as the chair of that procurement, procurement review panel. And so, the other people on the panel, Dr. Price nominates someone, and he, as you see on this, has selected Keith Dooley, who has agreed to do it, if we choose to move forward. And Ms. Miller has chosen someone, Ms. Shealy has, and I have as well, because the chair and vice-chair choose someone. And if we choose to move forward with this, they have agreed. And then if we do choose to move forward, we will need to select a person from our board to serve on that. Ms. Shealy has been on that panel, however, the panel hasn't been used at any point. And so, I personally would recommend that she just stay in that role. She's a twenty-three-year healthcare finance executive currently working at Lexington Medical as the Assistant Vice President of Managed Care and Utilization Management. And so, I think that, I'm trying to remember if she was on the board when we did our... Were you on the board at that time for the other procurement review?
Yes, Ms. McCown and I were on that. That's when we selected Malden and Jenkins. Is that what you're talking about, or no?
Oh, no, for... Nope, okay. No, no, no. Anyways, so, we will move forward. Do I hear a motion to appoint a procure review panel for the 2025-2026 fiscal year?
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint a procurement review panel for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to appoint a board member to serve as the chair of the procurement review panel?
Madam Chair, I may get in trouble, but I move that we appoint board member Beth Shealy.
She's in Hawaii.
To serve as the chair of the procurement review panel.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
No, hold on.
Madam Chair, can we have a discussion? Oh, yes, discussion. Yes, sir.
So, what I'm about to say, it has nothing to do with the people on the panel. This is strictly positions.
Okay.
With the vice-chair having an appointment on the panel, there is a perceived bias. Because if you appoint a position, they could feel beholden to the person that appointed them.
Okay.
And, and procurement, that is one of the number-one issues when it comes to conflict, is any perceived bias.
That is fair. Does our finance or legal team have any...
Could you repeat what the bias was? I'm sorry, I don't see.
Since the vice-chair is allowed an appointment, and then they also serve as the board chair, there is a perceived bias because the person they appoint could be beholden to who appointed them.
I see where you're coming from. I do want to add clarification, just so there's not a misunderstanding. This panel is not selecting the audit firm to do the audit. This panel is in a situation where if we have awarded a bid or something's happened and the, one of the bidders has an issue with it, they would then have a hearing with a panel. That's what this panel is for. I just wanted to make sure there was no misunderstanding.
Protest panel, correct?
Right, exactly. Just wanted to make sure for the community and everyone that we understood exactly what this panel would be serving as. But I do agree that the appearance of two positions.
And like I said, it has nothing to do with the people in the positions. It's literally the positions itself.
Yeah, that's, that's fair. So with that, then, do we have a...
Well, we, so we've got, we've got a motion on the floor for Ms. Shealy, so...
Madam Chair, may I make an amendment to the motion? Or do we, okay. I would like to amend the motion to appoint board member Nick Pizzuti to serve as the chair of the procurement review panel.
Wait, wait. So point of order. So we need to withdraw the motion that's out, that's out there on the table?
I just amended the name, but Mrs. Pygney, I don't think I can do that.
But can she amend my motion?
No, you would have to amend your motion.
I think I have to amend the motion. Okay.
She made a suggestion. Now you can do it.
Got it, okay. Okay, so I accept your suggestion, and I amend my motion that we, instead of Beth Shealy, we appoint board member Nick Pizzuti to serve as the chair of the procurement review panel.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any other discussion?
Mr. Pizzuti, are you okay with serving in this position?
I do it every day, so...
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, moving on to item three point three, thirteen point three. Do I hear a motion to renew the updated Lexington One Educational Foundation Memorandum of Understanding?
Madam Chair, I move that we renew the updated Lexington One Educational Foundation Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pizzuti. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Libby Roof.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm actually going to ask Bridget Winston to come forward, who is currently serving as the chair of the Lexington One Education Foundation. And as we are in the process of reconsidering the, or just re-upping the MOU, I thought it would be a great time for you all to hear from the board chair of the foundation about the highlights. Before doing that, I will recognize Mr. Randy Cooper, who is the secretary treasurer of the foundation board, sitting on the front row up there. And we have also the executive director of the foundation, Julie Washburn. And I don't think I missed anybody else on the foundation. So we thank them for being with us tonight, and I will turn it over to Ms. Winston, and you have the clicker.
Is this, is this on? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hello. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm pleased to be here this evening to share a highlight of our annual accomplishments from the Lexington One Educational Foundation. It's been my pleasure to serve on the foundation's board for the past two years and as chair for this past year. The Educational Foundation has a sole mission to support the students, teachers, schools, and families of Lexington District One in two main focus areas, education and crisis assistance. We do this by building partnerships with individuals, corporations, and friends who choose to support our efforts. We're grateful for these partnerships and the generous donations from our community that enable us to accomplish this mission through our various grants each year. Thank you for helping us strengthen these current relationships with our existing philanthropic partners as well as connecting us with new individuals and businesses who might be interested in supporting Lexington One. One of our larger annual education initiatives is the Bucks for Books grants that strengthen the literacy skills of our students. This year's grants supported every third, fourth, and fifth grade classroom in our elementary schools. The $25,800 Bucks for Books grant purchased more than 6,600 books that were placed in 310 classrooms. The books focused on strengthening science and social studies literacy this year. Our teachers and literacy coaches continue to share how important these grants are each year in building classroom libraries and how they also have a long-lasting impact on student literacy. Our innovation grants offered for the past eleven years are open to elementary and middle schools. Each year, they support larger school projects that are creative and spark students' imagination and problem-solving skills. Many innovation grants focus on STEM learning via STEM kits, robots, and other educational tools. Other projects have focused on creative and innovative ways to engage students in learning, such as providing a set of virtual reality goggles that transported students at one school to a particular moment in history for an immersive social studies lesson. Our major donors like Michelin continue to support educational investments in Lexington One through their donations to the foundation. For seven years, Michelin North America and its leaders here in Lexington have generously funded VEX robotics teams at the middle and high school levels. These funds, in combination with other donations, have enabled the Educational Foundation to invest more than $125,000 on computer science and robotics learning at various grades over the past seven years. These grants are critically important to STEM learning experiences in Lexington One. Such investments create opportunities to teach our students important science, technology, math, and engineering skills in addition to developing teamwork, communication, problem-solving, and critical thinking skills that strengthen their future career paths. Every spring, the foundation honors our top academic achievers when we host the annual celebration of excellence in education. This event showcases the top ten percent of our graduating seniors and gives our community the chance to celebrate these students with scholarships. Pelean High School was the host school for our 2025 celebration, and it was such a special night honoring almost 200 seniors from all five of the Lexington District One high schools. Our sponsors and volunteers are critically important in making this celebration a success every year, and we appreciate all they do to support the foundation endeavors. Since its inception, the Educational Foundation has invested in the futures of our Lexington One seniors through our scholarship funds. We currently offer sixteen scholarships to seniors who are pursuing a college education after they graduate from high school. Establishing a scholarship fund is a permanent way for an individual or family to leave a legacy in Lexington One. In addition, our board created the Higher Education Support Grants in 2018 to provide need-based assistance to our seniors who are pursuing a college degree but need significant financial aid to make their dreams a reality. This year, $31,500 in scholarships and grants supported some of our outstanding Lexington One seniors who are pursuing a college education this fall. To date, the Educational Foundation has invested close to half a million dollars in scholarship awards and over $81,000 in need-based grants for our seniors who have pursued a college education. Furthermore, our targeted programmatic grants from donors like Carolina Gas Transmission, which created a new mechatronics program in Lexington One, invest in the future careers of our high school students. Multiple years of building construction grants have strengthened the career-ready skills of our high school students who plan to pursue a job in that area. Accordingly, educational foundation partners are extremely important to Lexington District One's efforts to develop its students' career readiness skills. The foundation supports Lexington One teachers and students each year through our Michelin Golden Apple teacher grants as well, which are one of the longest and most significant corporate investments in the foundation and in Lexington One. Michelin's twenty-two-year partnership investment is worth more than $100,000, as the annual investment is $5,000 to fund teacher grants that enhance classroom learning. As you can see from the photos, STEM skills, reading, mathematical literacy, and life skills that are focused on gardening were a few of the projects that were funded this year. In addition to our support of educational initiatives, the Educational Foundation provides a tremendous amount of need-based assistance across our district each year. Our LEAP emergency grants, made possible through gifts from our Lexington One employees, provide temporary financial assistance to families who are experiencing a crisis. Payments for rent, utilities, and groceries are typical awards made throughout the school year to help these families in need. The foundation's need-based grants were also a tremendous help to five families in our district last fall who lost their homes due to Hurricane Helene. The grants gave them temporary housing, groceries, and more to support them during an extremely tough time. In addition, our health grant, our health fund grants support our Lexington One nurses and our students with the purchase of portable vision screeners and digital thermometers that are sent home with less advantaged students and their parents, so they can monitor their children's health. Our Helping Hands grants to schools have given school leaders the funds to provide discretionary, need-based assistance to their students whose families are struggling. Forty-eight percent of Lexington One students this past school year were experiencing poverty. So the Educational Foundation's need-based grants are critically important in helping these families. These grants have provided food, clothing, medical care, temporary transportation, and more to students whose families were in a financial crisis and needed help in a small way. Our Caring Heart Fund gives financial support to our Lexington District One social workers as they assist students who are experiencing housing challenges, which is a growing population in our district. Furthermore, together with our nursing teams, our social workers have... Furthermore, together with our nursing teams, our social workers have purchased eye exams and glasses for 10 students this past school year, thanks to grants from the Educational Foundation. The Educational Foundation continues to support the Rising Stars Summer Camp each June. This camp is led by Lexington One social workers and educators who work with students to get them back on track to graduate from high school. Last summer, the Foundation provided funds for the transportation of these students to and from camp each day. In addition, our grants support a number of the district's after-school programs that are targeted to at-risk students who need tutoring to pass important core classes, which enables the students to stay on grade level. The Lexington One Educational Foundation also continues to provide need-based grants to our brand-new international teachers who desperately need grant support to get settled in our country and in the Lexington community. Our staff work closely with the district's human resources team to identify these teachers each year. Since the Lexington One Educational Foundation established these grants in 2018, the Foundation has aided aided 77 international teachers in our district. These investments support teacher recruitment by filling gaps, and they support teacher retention, as more than 80% of these grant recipients are still teaching in our district. Foundation leadership has also supported teacher training via HomeGroom Institute Grants three different times during the summer. The Foundation's donors truly are our philanthropic partners. Their gifts make it possible for the Foundation leadership to support so many needs in Lexington One each year. The Lexington High School Boys Soccer Team is a terrific example of this. Each year, they raise money by scoring goals during their season and selling bracelets in their Cats Kick Cancer Tournament, which then provides financial support to students, teachers, staff, and parents who are battling cancer. This year, the Cats Kick Cancer Fund and our Leap Emergency Fund supported one of our school district bus drivers who was diagnosed with cancer. The financial assistance was helpful to her and her family as they tried to make ends meet during this tough battle. In addition, we are fortunate to have many in-kind donors who provide food, school supplies, gift cards, and more to the Foundation. We are so thankful to everyone who donates and makes all this support possible. Each May, the Lexington One Foundation leadership recognizes one outstanding district administrator with the Joseph M. Beidenbow Administrator of the Year Award. Administrators are secretly nominated by peers for consideration and must truly exemplify outstanding leadership. Lexington Elementary School's Assistant Principal Albert Robertson was surprised with this prestigious and well-deserved award this spring. He stood out, stood out among his peers and was so deserving of the Foundation's honor this, this school year. Every year, the Foundation also holds special events that serve as fundraisers to support our operational costs and grants. On October 23rd, we will, we will hold our For the Foundation Golf Tournament, and please make plans to attend if you're able. We'd love to have you. And on July 14th, the Educational Foundation will host the Back-to-School Administrators Breakfast, and sponsors make that event possible every year. Please contact me, our staff, or other Foundation Board members to get involved in any of our efforts if you are interested. Our fundraisers are critically important to empowering our leadership to support needs in Lexington One. Finally, know that the Lexington One Foundation has been actively supporting Lexington District One in so many ways for 30 years. We're excited to share this milestone with you and others this year. Thank you for encouraging others to support our endeavors through donations. We also encourage you to visit our website to learn more about what we do. Your gifts make it possible for us to support the students, teachers, and schools in Lexington One. Thank you for your time tonight to listen and learn about the Foundation's mission and to share this information with others who may wish to support us as well. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. Board, do you have any comments or questions for the Educational Foundation?
I just say it sounds like a lot of good work to undergird what's happening in our schools, so thank you all for doing that.
Yes, thank you so much for being here tonight. All right, Board, we have a motion on the table to renew the updated Lexington One Educational Foundation Memorandum of Understanding. And a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adopt a resolution that states the Lexington County School District Board, Board of Trustees has decided not to participate in the community eligibility program due to the financial burden it would impose on the district and taxpayers?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt a resolution that states the Lexington County School District Board of Trustees has decided not to participate in the community eligibility program due to the financial burden it would impose on the district and taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Ms. Miller, I'll turn this over to you for discussion.
Sure. This, as you will recall, was one of the items on the budget requests that were in the orange-shaded category. That was 2.5 million. So again, this is something that we have deemed not meeting into our strategic priorities. Just a reminder, any family that is eligible for free or reduced meals can still apply, will still receive either a free or reduced meal. Additionally, our Pillion Area Schools have another year left on the program that they are committed to for four years, so they, those families will still have that for next year.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Board, do you have any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve policy IKE and IKER Promotion, Retention, and Acceleration of Students?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy IKE, IKER Promotion, Retention, and Acceleration of Students.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gaskins.
So all of the instructional policies for second reading tonight, the revisions were initiated by the changes to the Read to Succeed Act, Act 114, which was updated in 2024. But while we were making those updates, we also studied the policies just to, to see if we needed to make any additional revisions. For IKE, we've made a few adjustments that we're recommending based on your feedback since first reading. One, in the policy IKE, because the, the language around retention is a little more vague, but spelled out in detail in the administrative rule, we've just noted that, that that is outlined in IKER. We've also taken another look at the credits high school students would need to earn to be promoted. I do want to clarify one thing. So the Education Oversight Committee, in terms of our accountability, does require that students have the six credits to be promoted to 10th grade, 12th to 11th, and 18th to 12th for our accountability purposes. In terms of the State Department of Education, they allow districts to have discretion in terms of promotion. So one's about accountability, the other's about promotion, but we want those to be aligned as much as possible and really keep kids on track to graduate, which is what that accountability is all about. So we've taken another look at that. Our recommendation is five credits to be promoted from ninth to 10th, and then getting back on track with the 12 from 10th to 11th and 18 from 11th to 12th. And the reason for that is really trying to, the five for ninth to 10th is keeping kids engaged. That first year of high school can be really difficult, and so if that year isn't as successful for a student, we don't want them to give up hope. We want to increase our interventions, but then immediately get them back on track. So that's another adjustment that we're recommending since first reading. And I did want to note, this is not a revision we've made, but we have investigated the potential for paper and pencil testing for the writing test in third grade. That was a budget proviso. Last year, we are awaiting guidance from the department to see if that's going to be an option again this year, and if so, how much the cost would be. So we're hoping to get that information very soon. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskins. Board, do you have questions or comments? Ms. Gaskins, I would like to thank you and your team for going back and looking at the credits for the promotions. Out of curiosity, for ninth graders, is it common practice, if a ninth grader only earns five credits, to encourage them either to do credit recovery or possibly virtual SC over the summer, so that the next year they don't have to get the seven credits? Does that make sense?
I see our high school administrators all shaking their heads yes, so we keep a list of students who are not on track to graduate and try everything possible to get them on track to graduate. So all of the above, yes.
Okay, great. All right, Board, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve policy IHCA Summer School?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy IHCA Summer School.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Ms. Gaskins, do you have any comments on that one?
Just one minor revision that's been made on this one since first reading. We just clarified the language in the third paragraph regarding the number of credits students can earn over the summer. It was a little confusing the way it was written, so we've simply cleaned up that language some.
Thank you so much, Board. Do you have any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve policy ILB, ILBR District Test Security?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy ILB, ILBR District Test Security.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Ms. Gaskins, I think this is you as well. Any comments?
It is. These are also updated to include what's required with Read to Succeed. I've not received any feedback first, since, since first reading, and no changes have been made.
All right, Board, with no changes being made, do you have any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve policy ILBB and ILBBR State Program Assessments?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy ILBB, ILBBR State Program Assessments.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Ms. Gaskins?
Ditto on this one. No changes since first reading, and revisions reflect what's required with Read to Succeed legislation.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Board. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve policy JICG Tobacco and Nicotine Used by Students?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policy JICG Tobacco and Nicotine Used by Students.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Mr. Clark Cooper, do you have any comments or things to add for this?
Yes, ma'am. Just, I, I will just state there have been no changes since the first reading. But I would like to address the, you know, this policy revision simply addressed the consequence latter. And we had a healthy discussion about that first consequence amongst the board and with, with administration regarding the day of out-of-school suspension. So I, I would, since we talked, since we spoke about it at length, I would like just to address our, our position on, on leaving that with being one day of out-of-school suspension. We certainly recognize that in the in-school suspension room, we control that environment. And if a child is at home on out-of-school suspension, you know, that experience is going to be left to their parent. It is our position that the out-of-school suspension is the more severe consequence. And, and the reason that we, we leave it with that is not to be punitive. It is to keep vapes out of the school. And Ms. McCown, you, you made reference in the discussion to just inquiry about, well, you know, if it's a drug offense involving a vape, you know, that's a separate consequence system. You know, drug violations result in a recommendation for expulsion. So in just in looking at some of the data, you know, with our, our drug violations, 70% of our drug violations involve a vape. So they, our position is we don't want vapes in the school. And so that's the reason why we have left that in at the, at the out-of-school suspension level. Certainly appreciate and, and understand the, the, the consideration for in-school suspension to keep that child in school and also to control the environment. But, you know, it's, it's our belief that the out-of-school suspension for that first consequence is the best mechanism to deter students from bringing vapes into the building.
Board, any comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So reading through this policy, for purposes of the policy, this hasn't changed. It just says, it goes and it defines tobacco product means yada, yada, yada. Alternative nicotine product means any vaping product, whether or not it contains nicotine, including but not limited to electronic smoking devices, so on and so forth. So I guess my question is, based on the way that that reads, if it says alternative nicotine product means any vaping product, whether or not it contains nicotine, which policy would be in effect? This one or the drug use one?
The drug use one would be in effect if it was found to be that there was a, a drug substance, an illegal substance that was in possession at school. The, an empty, an empty vape, an empty vape pen, that would be a violation of the tobacco policies. That is a, that would be a, a vaping product.
I hear you. I just see a little bit, I'm not trying to get caught in the weeds. I think we approve it, but maybe we just look at making sure that somebody couldn't come back and say, it says whether or not it contains nicotine. It didn't contain nicotine, it contained, I don't speak that language.
If it contained THC, we have a policy that addresses that. Our drug, our drug policy addresses that. So if it was, if it was found to be, you know, a product that did contain that substance, the drug violation policy would be in effect.
It's not going to be anything less than. Could we just reference that at the bottom, maybe? That policy? I don't know. Y'all tell me. Just put it out there. You know better than I do, but. Maybe reference that there is a policy that address, addresses vapes without nicotine.
There is another policy that addresses it.
I think what Mr. Cooper was trying to say is there's one policy that addresses vapes with drugs. Then there's this policy that addresses vapes with everything else. And in the one statement that you were referencing, it also even goes on to explicitly describe even candy or other novelty items designed to look like a tobacco product. So whether it has nicotine or not, or if it's a look-alike, so if it's an empty vape without nicotine in it, or it's a candy vape that looks like it, that's a violation. So I think that line right there addresses the empty vape as well as the vape with a tobacco product in it. Mr. Cooper, am I summarizing that correctly?
Yes, sir. And the only thing I would just add to that, if there is any drug violation that is to have occurred, that policy is what school administrators go by to enforce the appropriate discipline consequence.
So they would be looking at JICH Drug and Alcohol Use by Students Policy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Board, any other questions, comments, discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve policy EEAEC Student Conduct on Buses and delete policy EDCB, EDCBR?
I move that we approve policy EEAEC Student Conduct on Buses and delete policy EDCB, EDCBR.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
SC, now second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Mr. Cooper, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'd like to buy a vowel. So this policy is being brought forward for second reading. There have been no changes since first reading. It was re-codified, so that's the reason you see for the deletion. And we have added a statement to that model policy addressing the school student conduct on buses rules that was developed by school administrators, bus drivers, and both student administration and transportation administrators. That'll be a part of the student handbook, and school administrators will be utilizing their school discipline matrix for enforcing the bus conduct policy.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Board, do you have any questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I hear a motion to move the regular monthly board meeting in July from July 15th to July 14th at 8:45 a.m. at White Nile High School?
Madam Chair, I move that, I move that we move the regular monthly board meeting in July from July 15th to July 14th at 8:45 a.m. at White Nile High School.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pazuti. Just for information, in recent years, due to summer events and vacation schedules, we've held just a short business meeting for HR approvals and any other time-sensitive issues, and this will be held on July 14th at 8:45 a.m. at the White Nile High School library. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Dr. Postaway, it's your last meeting with us, and just again, as we all stated earlier, thank you so much for your commitment and dedication to Lexington One. It's been a wonderful three years, and we will miss you. But good luck and enjoy your future time with your family and retirement. So, and Dr. Price, you ready? With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, before we adjourn, I'd like to take a point of privilege and ask everyone with, that's here tonight to join me in thanking Dr. Postlewhite. With that, I move we adjourn.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
We had a second.
Oh, wait, no, no!
Now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.